Good evening and welcome. I will call the Yakima Business Meeting of December 2nd, 2025 to order. We'll start with roll call, please.
Berg.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Byers.
Present.
D'Cio.
Here.
Glenn.
Here.
Herrera.
Here.
Roy.
Here.
Thank you. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have interpreter services.
Good evening. Si alguien necesita delayado en intérprete, tenemos el sistema disponible saliendo de la sala. Gracias.
Gracias. Thank you. Next is public comment. Tonight we'll allow 35 minutes for public comment, and everybody who wishes to speak will have two and a half minutes. When you come to the podium, please identify yourself by giving your name and the city in which you live. Also, I'm going to ask tonight, I appreciate that all of the signs are out in the lobby and not here in the council room. So we're going to ask that all of the conversation be respectful. And also, when there's this many people in the room, if you have side conversations going on, it's hard for everyone else to hear. So we're going to ask that you keep side conversations to a minimum so everybody in the audience can actually hear what's going on. Other than that, make sure we keep the doorway clear because that's a fire exit, and so by regulations, we have to have that. Any questions? Okay, let's go. The first person we have tonight is Ryan Anderson.
Well, good evening, council. Thank you for having me back. I was here at the last meeting. And I, my name's Ryan Anderson, and I live here in the city of Yakima with my family. So at the last meeting, I pled with you to give us some time with Lions Pool, at least get us through the season. And that plea was heard, and I appreciate that that's what you're working on providing. So I'd just like to start off by saying, thank you. That's awesome. We get to have a high school swim season. And so, so thanks for that. Moving, moving forward, I, you know, would hope and encourage that we continue to keep finding solutions, keep Lions Pool open. And I know these other potential cuts, Harmon Center, the fire station and other cuts, we need to continue to work. I know you've seen there's energy in the crowd here. The last meeting and this meeting, there's lots of folks that are willing to help, whether that's helping run the levy again, helping raise funds and community partnerships to keep these services rolling. We're all here and we're all behind that endeavor. And I see later on in the agenda, there's, there's opportunity to increase revenue. I would normally not support increases in utility taxes, but in this case, I would, given the dire need of city finances. So I would encourage yes votes on those and encourage continued solution finding and reaching out to all of us to provide help. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Next is Amanda and Kevin Evans. Yep, you can wave hi to us. Good.
Hello, council. My name's Amanda Evans, and this is my son. Let me tell him your name.
How about Emma's name is?
And thank you for hearing us. We're here to talk about the Washington Fruit Community Center. Something I've learned, especially as being a single mother and somebody with, to somebody with special needs, how important community is. And the Washington Fruit Community Center has been a really big part of my life, and my son's life especially. He's been a part of the program for the last five years, going to their after-school program.
I'm a banger.
And to their summer program. And he loves it. And it can be tricky, you know, finding a place that, you know, is accommodating and accepting of somebody who has special needs. And they have been so wonderful. They allowed him to go there as a paid participant even though he had aged out. And then later on, over the last few years, as a volunteer. And it's given him an opportunity to build confidence in himself and skills and relationships. They even wrote him a letter of recommendation. I mean, it's just been such a blessing. And it is such a beautiful space. I mean, if you have not been in there, it is just such a great space. And it'd be such a shame to have it go to waste. And I feel like it'd be a really big loss to the city of Yakima. I've, I've lived here most of my life. My son's been here since he was a year old. And I want to give him a chance now to talk about how much your camp and summer camp program means to you.
Well, if the kids are being really bad and naughty, saying bad words when you're talking about your staff, or punching people, or, or running away from staff, not listening, I, I might, I really need to write it down in the, what'd you call it? Behavior intent finder of 2026. Plus, I might really need some help writing it down. So this time, I, I do not want to play. I want to work from, from eight hours from nine to four unless I play silent ball. This is it.
Can you tell them why you love the camp and what it means to you?
I like my camp program because I want to help the crocs to somehow play silent ball, and gurus help play silent ball, and dragons help play silent ball. And they say, um, they say, hey Kevin, can you please get a ball for silent ball for the crocs, please? And I say, okay, okay, stop or do it. And then I'll play silent ball. And then during snack time, they say, hey Kevin, can you please get the snack for snack time? And I say, okay, I would, I would do it.
Is there anything else you want to say about why you love your camp program?
I love my, I love my camp program because I want to help a lot. And I love the, I love the assist school program because to be new, campers want to meet.
Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, Kevin, very much for being here. That's right, the time is up, so thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Yep. Next is Jessica Villa.
Hello. Good evening. Oh, my son got shy.
Here he comes.
So my name's Jessica. I'm from Yakima. So, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, my name is Jessica Villa, and I'm here, and this is Giovanni Brunner. And I'm here to express my deep concern about the planned closure of the Washington Fruit Community Center, and specifically the Beyond the Bell After-School Program. So my son has attended for about four years now since second grade. And the impact the program had on him and the family has been extraordinary. When he first joined, he was shy and unsure of himself. Because of the support and encouraging, truly phenomenal staff at the community center, it has really grown socially and gained his confidence. He would not be standing next to be here in the last couple of years. Their, their attention to detail, especially is making sure that every kid feels included, safe, and valued, shows how exceptional the center is. As a parent, having a place where I know my child is cared for, supported with homework, engaged in activities, and surrounded by positive role models has been invaluable. We have recommended this location to many other families because we've seen so much of how it has impacted the children there. I also am very concerned about the timing of this closure. Ending the program in the middle of the school year leaves parents in a difficult position. We are left with uncertainty about the safety, childcare, and supervision during the hours between the end of school year and the end of a workday. If the closure cannot be prevented, I strongly encourage the council to allow the center to remain open through the end of the school year instead of closing it this month. Families need time to plan, adjust, and find safe alternatives for our children. Looking ahead, my son hopes to volunteer at the community center once he has reached middle school and high school in order to give back to the program and help shape, that helps shape him. Closing the Washington Fruit Community Center will take away vital services for families today and meaningful opportunities for leadership and community building in the future. The center is more than just a building. It's a safe place for children to grow, a support system for working families, and a positive presence in our neighborhood. I respectfully urge you to reconsider the closure and protect the resource that is essential to our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So thank you, Jessica, and thank you, Giovanni. Next is John Whitney.
Hi, I'm John Whitney. I'm a resident here of the city of Yakima. I voted for the levy, and obviously it didn't pass. And I'm here to speak up for Lions Pool, but I also care about public safety, the Harmon Center as well. I just want to say that I know economic development is a big narrative here in this town. I'm here because of good opportunities in this city. And one of those is it's a very unique thing, and I want to just make sure that this is very clear. Even though that Yakima has an indoor pool in the city of Yakima, it is a regional pool, and it's been a regional pool for decades. I know we pay for it, but maybe we can find a way to have others pay for it. I think that making families choose between good things and economic development is not a great conversation starter. And so I really urge you to please consider not taking these good opportunities away. I'm a family who came here, and one of the things I wanted to come here to be a part of is a place that offered swimming indoors. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. Competitive swimming is a big deal.
Thank you, John. Next is Lynette Whitney. Lynette Whitney? Oh, here she comes. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Lynette Whitney. I live in the city of Yakima. I am a mom. I'm a mental health therapist. I am a small business owner, and I am a concerned citizen. I'm here to ask you to keep Lions Pool open. I have three boys who love Lions. We've had birthday parties there. I have tons of memories of watching them splash around in the pool and jumping off the climbing wall. It is their favorite pool. My oldest swam for the Davis Swim Team, went to state last year, which was an amazing experience for him. My middle son is currently in the middle of his swim season and has hopes of making it to state at some point. And my youngest is an eighth grader and has been dreaming for years of joining his brother on the swim team for his senior year. Freshman and senior year, swimming together. We will all be devastated if it closes. Swim Team is an amazing chance for students to get off of electronics, to exercise their bodies, and to learn a lifesaving skill. We have so many kids drown, and adults drown around here. The more that we can get them learning to swim, the better. And Coach Carl starts with kids who do not know how to swim and teaches them how to swim. And you do not need any level of physical activity. You can come in and learn how to swim. And we also have special needs kids that are on the swim team. It's an amazing chance to build community, to learn how to persevere, to learn how to endure, and to learn a skill and building confidence. I would hate to see that go away. For our school, we're at Davis, for any of the schools in the valley. And I realize it's kind of a strange thing with all of the schools using the same pool, but I'm still really sad to see that end. I also, as a mental health therapist, mental health is super important. And being able to be physically active in the middle of the winter is really challenging for a lot of people. And for some people, this is the affordable option, to be able to water walk, to be able to lap swim, to be able to do water aerobics, any of those things. I've heard it's more accessible than some other places, just in terms of folks with disabilities. And it is, you know, a third of the price of some of the other. Even if you raise the rates, even if you increased revenue, it would still be way cheaper than some of the other alternatives for people, and people will just not be able to access those services. I also, I don't do the water walking, lap swimming, but I've heard there's a nice community there of people who support each other and encourage each other. So I feel like we need to provide more of these opportunities, not fewer opportunities. I'm also willing to be a part of conversations, trying to figure out a solution. I realize there's a budget crunch, but, so call me up. I'm happy to help and be a part of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynette. Next is Barry Burnfield.
Yeah, my name is Barry Burnfield. I'm a resident of Yakima since 1984. A retired physician and involved with the swim community for over 30 years. Official, a volunteer official, a parent, and a physician whose patients utilize that pool. I'm speaking not only for myself, and this is Andrew Redman. She'll introduce herself too. And then speaking for a group of stakeholders in, in the swim community. They've asked us to speak. We appreciate, as was said earlier, that there's efforts to keep Lions Pool open through the boys' high school season, which is common sense, and it's really the proper thing to do. So we appreciate that. The community has been given a very limited amount of time to find options, working with the city and perhaps the county as well, to keep the community resources available. But swim community is trying to help you. Some food for thought that came up in our discussions, until the better, more ideal solutions are arrived at in the future, is a one-pool concept. That is Lions, fall, winter, spring. MLK is your summer pool. It acts as one pool, covers all the seasons. You can keep, the, the MLK is going to be closed most of the year, right? And the Lions can be closed in the summer. As a temporary solution to help with funding. And if absolutely no other way to accomplish this, and you know more about this than I do with the budgeting, we could temporarily close Lions after boys' high school to work together really hard in the spring on these other solutions. We'd like not to see that option. And just as has been said before, pools, just like parks, Harmon Center, the Washington Fruit Building, are a community service. They're not some frivolous additional thing. The, the pool specifically provides public safety training, improves health and wellness, and provides opportunities for rehabilitation services for patients. And something I wanted to say the last time I was here, but there is a limited time. Yakima is short on physicians and other medical professionals. We all know that. We lost a hospital a few years ago for other reasons. Recruitment of physicians, new physicians and other medical professions, retention of physicians, demands having community services, including pools, parks, Harmon Center-like places available.
I'm sorry, Barry, but your time is up.
Okay. Well, thank you for listening.
May I speak?
She has hers.
Yes, go ahead.
Great. Thank you. My name is Andrea Redman. I'm, I'm a resident of Yakima. I live and work in this city. And again, I'd like to second Barry's point that we appreciate that you're planning on keeping the pool open through boys' season. I have 10 boys turned out for swimming this year, and they are super excited. In addition, my three daughters swim. My daughter's Adelaide Lozier. She was the state champion a couple of weeks ago. My daughter Cora Lozier placed 10th at state this year as a sophomore. And her sister Reed Lozier swam her heart out on Eisenhower relays. I swam at Lions Pool when I was a teenager for a short time from Wapto High School. And needless to say, I am very invested in Lions Pool. While I would like to speak about the importance of Lions Pool for Eisenhower and Davis Swimming, I'm really here to speak on behalf of the community of Yakima residents that need a pool. So I second what Barry said. The city of Yakima has an opportunity right here to keep a public pool open year-round. You know the benefits of the pool. It's been outlined many times tonight. Two weeks ago, when the fire and police chief spoke to you, you asked them what they would have the council do to support them. I'm here today to answer that same question as I represent those who live in the city and appreciate the pools. Make swimming available year-round. Lions Pool can be open in the, in the fall, winter, and spring, and MLK Pool can be open in the summer. This ensures three things. First, one public pool is available year-round for people to use. The second is it saves money because Lions Pool is open for only seven to nine months. And the third point is, while Lions is closed for the spring and summer this year, we would like to work with you, the city council, to help come up with a budget, with a model for keeping Lions Pool open. I know pools are expensive. They are expensive in every city there is, and most cities keep their pools. Yakima can keep this pool. We can work together with our stakeholders out here and with you. We can provide this service to the people who need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ann Knapp.
Good evening. My name is Ann Knapp. I live in the city of Yakima. I support the trolley. I'd like it to be a self-funded operation and not use scarce general fund dollars. My bottom line, and I did give you a handout, is please sell the trolley barn and museum to the trolley organization for the assessed value of $260,000. The trolley can assume all operations and maintenance costs. This will cut tens of thousands of general fund subsidies, reducing taxpayers' burdens, and that redirected money can help keep community assets open. I think the city council should uphold original requirements that the trolley pay all operation and maintenance costs. In November of 1985, Union Pacific offered to donate 20 miles of abandoned railroad tracks to the city. In December of 1985, the council voted no due to operating costs, liabilities, and uncertainty about operating the trolley on 160 privately-owned parcels. On reconsideration, the council reluctantly accepted the track donation based on urgent safety needs and said they would proceed with divesting all property and equipment associated with the system unless the trolley pays all costs and obtains private landowner permissions. In 1987, the court ruled the trolley cannot operate on abandoned easements across Kandang Orchard because the trolley is not railroad transportation. It is a tourist attraction. The 2016 city council report found that infrastructure is deteriorating so quickly, a decision must be made to invest in its upgrade or close down the system. In 2026, I think it would be good to clarify, is there a current operating agreement? It appears to have expired in 2024 without any council reauthorization. The draft agreement appears to increase general fund subsidies, gas, electric, water, sewer, refuse phone, and the EV charger, and new this year, phone, internet telecommunications, and alarms. No costs are identified. There's undisclosed general fund subsidies. It was budgeted at $8,000 in 2022. What is it now? It's not itemized that I could find. Will raised utility taxes subsidize thousands of undisclosed general fund trolley expenses. Some operations and maintenance costs are in Seale, not in Yakima. And previously shared revenue is now heavily shared towards the trolleys, not the city. I'd like you to also review the trolley's fundraising, their renting city property for up to $350 an hour.
I'm sorry, but your time is up.
And providing alcoholic beverages. Thank you.
Next is Tony Sandoval.
Tony Sandoval, District 3, city of Yakima. Awakening is taking place in the city of Yakima because of the current financial challenge. How the city does business is taking place that should have happened before now. I'm seeing other individuals, as you're seeing people coming up here and volunteering to make a difference, which is awesome. So we're benefiting out of what's happening right now. So I'm here to talk about safety. I think safe, without safety, we have nothing. We have, we have had shootings in parks, and people have gotten killed. Just yesterday, 72nd Avenue in Chestnut, shots fired. Now, that's usually unheard of. I mean, where I live is by the college, so we hear shots all the time. Crime is climbing. It's upticking. It's not going away. Murders aren't going away. Drug dealing is not going away. Racing is not going away. Rettus driving, which is mind-boggling. How do you flip a car in the city of Yakima? I'm not an expert in what I'm, I'm going to propose, but would it be possible to use the money from the 1/10 local sales tax to salvage some positions on the reduction of police? My thought would be, there's two officers, it looks like, on your budget that's going to be, they're going to be cut. And I was wondering if we could utilize some of that money for this. The city has put a lot of money to get these individuals trained. And sooner or later, we're going to have to need more officers without any choice. And then the other two is the two analysis positions. When there's crime, you got to have somebody to analyze what's, you know, how to get, how to solve these crimes. So it makes no sense to, to cut those positions, even doing half of both of those four positions. I would, if you would reconsider what I've just laid out for you, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Next is Flora Prado.
Hi, my name is Flora Prado, and I'm writing because I heard that the Beyond the Bell program might close, and that makes me very worried. I currently attend Beyond the Bell and have been attending for five years, and it is very important to me and many other students. Beyond the Bell is a safe place for us to go after school. It helps kids who don't have anywhere else to go or who need a safe place where they know adults will look out for them. The staff are always kind, respectful, and they treat us like we matter. They listen to us and help us with anything we need. We also get to do many fun and active things, both indoor and outdoor. We play sports, get tutoring, tutoring, and do crafts, learn new skills, and get to spend time with friends. It's a place where I feel hap, where I feel happy and included. Some kids even depend on the snacks there when they feel hungry, and that really helps them. Another important thing is a safe transportation to the program after school. It makes parents feel better knowing their kids can get to the program safely. If Beyond the Bell closes, a lot of kids won't have anywhere safe to go after school. I hope you will think about how much this program means to us and help keep it open. It makes a big difference in our lives and in the community. Thank you for listening and caring about the kids in Yakima.
Thank you, Flora.
Very well done.
Yes. Next is Lucy Prado.
Good evening. My name is Lucy Prado. I'm writing, I'm here to express my deep concern regarding the potential closure, closure of the Beyond the Bell After-School Program, which takes place at the Washington Fruit Community Center. As a resident of Yakima and someone who has seen firsthand the vital role this program plays in our community, I urge you to reconsider any decision, decision that would result in its discontinuation. Beyond the Bell is not just another after-school program. It is the only program in Yakima that is both affordable for working families and provides reliable transportation for students from the Yakima School District. This combination makes it uniquely accessible to families who would otherwise have limited or no childcare options during critical after-school hours. If Beyond the Bell is closed, many parents, especially those working full-time or non-standard schedules, will be left with no viable alternatives. This raises serious concerns about safety as some children may be left home alone due to lack of options. Beyond the Bell offers more supervision, sorry, Beyond the Bell offers more than supervision. It provides enrichment, academic support, a safe environment, and positive mentorship that helps keep our youth engaged and out of potentially harmful situations. The loss of this program would not only affect individual families, but also the broader community. After-school programs like Beyond the Bell... After-school programs like Beyond the Bell strengthen public safety, support for workforce stability, and contribute to healthier youth development. Eliminating such a crucial resource would create ripple effects that Yakima cannot afford. I respectfully ask the city council to prioritize the well-being and safety of our children by ensuring that Beyond the Bell remains funded and operational. Thank you for your time and your commitment to Yakima's families and youth.
Thank you, Lucy. Next is Richard Blom.
Hello, my name is Richard Blom. I'm a city resident. I attend the morning senior exercise class at Washington Fruit Community Center. I usually go in early to socialize with other seniors. It's like my only outlet with other people. I live alone. We can play pool, we can play games. And then at like 10 o'clock, we have a one-hour senior exercise class, which helps me keep physically in shape. And then after we have our exercise class, the Meals on Wheels has a lunch program for us that we get fed a lunch. And on Mondays after lunch, they have a coloring class where we use colored pencils and do coloring. And there's lots of disabled people that come in with their caregivers that also attend the coloring class, and they play pool and do other things. And again, like a lot of the parents are saying, a lot of the kids do come to the Washington Fruit Community Center. And I went to the doctor this morning, and my nurse, her son goes to the Washington Fruit Community Center, and she's concerned about that. And during the summer months, it's also a cooling station. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Richard. Next is Sharon Madsen.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Sharon Madsen, and I live in the city of Yakima. I was here at the last meeting supporting, in support of Lions Pool. I'm a lap swimmer, and I've swam at Lions Pool for 30 years. I swim daily 30 minutes, just like a little motorboat, and gives me lots of time to think. And today I thought, you know, maybe somebody could sponsor one of these lanes. Anyway, just a thought. But in the meantime, I did read the report, the options that were online. I read the baseline for keeping the pool open for the swim team, and at the end it said drain pool. My heart just sank. I thought, oh, my gosh, drain pool. That just hurts my heart. And then I also read the three alternatives that have been presented also. In recent discussions, much of the focus has been centered on the swim team. While the swim team is an important and valued part of our community, Lions Pool has always been a place where everybody, every user group is included. Seniors, those in rehabilitation, individuals just trying to stay well, families, recreational swimmers, youth in lifeguard training and swimmers in swim lessons. And yes, our swimmers here proudly represent the community and competition. If the pool closes or becomes exclusive to one group, we lose far more than warm water. We lose lifeguard training and recreational swim, the opportunity for families to learn water safety, and the laughter and connection that have made this facility a true community anchor. And I really think that that's really a big part of Lions Pool, the laughter and connection that we, that we have with one another and with the workers there. A healthy aquatic program is not an either-or. It's inclusive. It supports therapy, safe training, recreation, and competitive growth, all under one roof. Restricting Lions Pool to swim team use alone would silence much of the community it was built to serve. And that was, one of the alternatives was alternative one is just to make, have the schools support the pool for the swimmers. I respectfully ask that the council to preserve Lions Pool as an inclusive resource, one that supports athletes, supports healing, and supports the well-being of the entire community. And looking at the alternatives, I believe that two and three, I believe are a better choice than alternative one. And I invite you to come and visit Lions Pool. It wouldn't even take five minutes. It's an easy in, easy out. You park, you come in, you look around, you visit with people, see, see the beauty of the pool. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Brian Hedman. Brian Hedman? Somebody coming? Okay, we see the, we see the arm signal.
You brought your bodyguards?
I did, for some backup. But, so I'm here to express support for the Washington Fruit Community Center. My children attend Taekwondo class twice a week at the center, and it's a well-attended, as you can see, it's a well-attended program. It's led by Mr. Miranda, and he offers it for free because he doesn't have to pay, you know, rental fee to be able to use the facility. And so it really, you know, allows a lot of people who otherwise wouldn't be able to attend one of these programs to, to participate. I recognize that the budget challenges the city faces. They're real, you know, especially with the failed levy that, that you proposed. But I don't, I'm not going to let you off the hook. We still need to find a solution. I know it's, it's difficult, but I think there are some options that, that we can, you know, try to come to work with the community. There's a lot of resources, whether that's nonprofits, community members. It was amazing when, you know, when the, we learned that, that, you know, the threat of this, you know, the community center being closed, everybody got on their phone and they were reaching out to people. So please include the community to look for solutions. Please keep trying. It's a great program. I've seen a lot of growth in my own kids and in, as you can see, in a lot of the other kids in the program. So I appreciate you taking time and, and want to know that this is a loved community center and a wonderful program. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. Thank you for being here, all of you students. Next is Barbara Tony.
I don't really have a prepared speech because I didn't know I was going to speak, but I'm Barbara Tony, and I live in Yakima. And I'm here to defend the Harmon Center. I'm in my 70s, and every time I go there, there's so many people. There's people on fixed incomes that can't afford to go out to lunch at Water Fire and that type of thing. But they can go there, see their friends, play games, talk, knit, play pool. It's very important. And I think so many of you were young, you don't realize it, but it, it, it's going to impact an awful lot of wonderful people. And I really wish there was a way we could reconsider somehow raising prices of the exercise classes or something to keep it open. It touches the lives of many, many elderly people here in Yakima, myself included. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. So I'll point out that our 35 minutes for public participation is over, but if the council agrees, we have probably about another, maybe 10, 15 minutes worth. If we have agreement on that, we can go ahead with public participation.
Fair.
Yep.
Great, thank you. We'll move on then. Next is Jessica, I'm sorry, Jessica Brummer? Is Jessica coming? Do I see an arm waving out there? Okay. So just to get you ready, Alicia Thomas is after Jessica. So if you hear Alicia, be ready, please.
More bodyguards.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Brunner. I am a physician, a resident physician, and these are my three children. I'm a resident here in Yakima. My three children depend on the Washington Fruit and Community Center. And I understand that the, that we've even, we've been recently informed that there's been a, like a budget issue and an issue with funding the program. I wanted to look, us to look closely at the true cost of closing the community center, a cost that would be paid not in dollars, but by the future of our children. For my family and many like us, the community center is an absolute lifeline. My, my eldest daughter, Talia, attends the Taekwondo class, and I felt like I've seen some improvement in her discipline, respect of others, and confidence. When you close the center, you're not just cutting off this line item in the budget. You are eliminating the only safe and affordable option and accessible options to hundreds of kids to a meaningful extracurricular activity. These fees and private programs are simply out of reach for working families without the center activities like martial arts, after-school tutoring. And they just vanish completely for, for a significant portion of our community. I urge the town council to think about working parents who count on this resource, the children who will be left nowhere, with nowhere to go. What is the plan for my three children? What is the plan for our low-income families? How do we retain physicians in our community when we have no community center to support the people in our community? Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Alicia Thomas, are you here? After Alicia will come Elise Cardenas.
Hello, I'm here because of the proposal to eliminate or diminish animal control positions. If we diminish this, it will have major consequences for the Yakima. Animal control is not an optional service. It is essential to the public. These officers respond to aggressive animals, bite cases, cruelty, and neglect concerns, injured animals in the road, and loose strays that pose a risk to the neighborhoods and kids. Without them, these calls will fall to the police, who are already overburdened, or they will simply go unanswered. If animal control is removed, we will quickly see more strays and aggressive animals in public, an increase in bite incidents and safety risks, slower or no response to dangerous animals, greater strain on shelters, rescues, and community resources, and importantly, increased legal liability for the city of Yakima if preventable public safety incidents occur without proper enforcement. Downsizing or removing animal control does not eliminate animal-related problems. It only removes the trained professionals who manage them and expose, exposes the city to unnecessary risk. I strongly urge the council to reconsider this decision for the safety, well-being, and legal protection of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Elise. Elise Cardenas? And after Elise will be Jeanine Van Deventer.
Good evening. My name is Elise Cardenas. I am standing before you as a community member and as a teacher and a mom. I live in Yakima in West Valley, and my kids swam for the West Valley Swim Team and other swim teams in the area. And while I really think that it's important that we keep the pools open for the swim team, but I looked on the CDC website, and I found some information that I thought was actually a surprise to me. Because as an educator, I work with students that are not going to be able to access any other pools besides the public ones. And I want this for them. I teach second grade at Barge Lincoln Elementary. A lot of these kids don't have homes, some of them. This is necessary for people beyond swim team and, and, and the whole community. So drowning deaths are in ages one to four. More children ages one to four die from drowning than any other cause of death in the United States. It is the second-leading cause of unintentional injury death for children ages five through 14. This is according to the CDC. Every year in the United States, there are over 4,000 unintentional drowning deaths. Also, at the state level, Washington State actually ranks more drowning deaths than the state of California, which I found surprising. And again, that's according to the CDC. Another number that I found interesting was that adults ages 65 years and older had the second highest rate of drowning, and that drowning is on the increase in the United States as a whole, according to the studies that were referenced in the CDC website. Also, let's see, over half of the, of adults in the United States have never taken a swimming lesson. There's other statistics here that break it down through ethnic backgrounds, too, so...
I'm sorry, but your time is up.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for your great introduction.
As an educator, I'd really appreciate the consideration. Thank you.
Okay, next is Jeanine Van Deventer. Before you get started, the next person up is Jack Bannon, if you'll be ready. Go ahead, please.
Hi, I'm Jerry Lee Van Deventer. I also go by Nini. Everybody calls me Nini. I just want to say really quickly, I was born here in Yakima a long time ago, born and raised here, and I see a lot of people out here that I recognize from the Harmon Center and from Lions Pool. And of course, my fifth-grade teacher over there, too, but that's besides the point. She's amazing. Anyway, I wanted to speak my piece also on saving the pools. I am an independent contractor of Lions Pool. I teach Aqua Zumba. Yes, I'm a Zumba instructor. I may not look it because I like food, but still, I love teaching Aqua Zumba. And since COVID shut down my Zumba studio, Aqua Zumba is the only one I'm able to teach right now. I've had members who have come to my class continue coming and have mentioned how they have received their, received, they've found their best friends in my classes, and they're still coming to this day, and that warms my heart. I've also had other people come to me and say that they are too embarrassed to go out in the public and do other things on their own for any kind of workout, exercise, anything. But because they're underwater, they feel so much better about it, that they can work out and they can feel good about themselves. And I have had people say, I've lost 30 pounds since coming to your class, and I feel so good about myself. I hope that I can someday feel the same way they do and feel good about myself. But the fact that they're able to do that in my classes is amazing. And if we close Lions Pool, we've already closed Franklin Pool. Those were my highest classes attendance is at Franklin Pool. Now that Franklin's done, we're going to close Lions Pool, too, and that means I have no more Zumba classes to teach. And of all my people that come to my classes and myself, I would be devastated, and I'd really like to think again about how we can keep Lions Pool open. Thank you.
Thank you, Nini. Jack Bannon? And after Jack will be Axel Ranjaf. No, I'm sorry, I'll get there. Go ahead.
My name is Jack Cannon. I'm a business owner here on the West Side. I own Designs LTD, a screen printing store on 5th and Yakima Avenue. I retired in 2008. My daughter runs the business now. But during the time- But during the time that I was doing that, I also became a member of the West Side Merchants Association, served on their board, and also became their president for about four years up until 2008, when I retired. Okay, during that time, I was also involved in a lot of our city's business down here. And our mayor at the time, Mary Place, and also Pauline Dave Adler, and a lot of the council members during that time were very active in our business district. I'm sure you guys do that same thing nowadays. I haven't heard a lot of noise, but I haven't been that involved. I currently teach at our Harmon Center. On Thursday and Friday mornings, I teach art classes. And through that, I've been doing that for a few years there. And through that experience, I've observed some things as far as operations and stuff go, and I feel like they don't generate enough money. I think that they could be run a lot more efficiently. And I know that, you know, that are concerned for our limited income and our older society. But the people that I have in the classes, they pay $1.45 for those classes for two-hour sessions. Okay, there's two days out of the week. But all those people would gladly pay at least $3, if not $5. Also, I've observed, you know, like when they throw the benefits or the bazaars, that's a once-in-a-year occasion. And in order to be a vendor for that, they have to register in January. And then beyond that, everybody's on a waiting list. And I know that this year, that waiting list was pretty big, which tells me they're not charging enough. When I was doing this downtown stuff 30 years ago, you know, we're here in the, like, the farmer's market and a lot of those things. We paid a percentage of what we made, or in my case, I was representing the West Side Merchants and doing a courtesy thing and hosting a Ted for the children and the families.
Mr. Bannon, I'm sorry, but your time is up.
Excuse me?
Your time is up?
Oh.
Yeah, but thank you very much.
Well, darn. I wanted to ask the council about if you guys are familiar with the Older American Act.
We will keep that in mind, but your time is up. Thank you.
Oh, boy. Sorry, what act?
The Older American Act.
Oh.
Okay. Thank you for that reference. Yeah, we appreciate it. Next is Axel Rappchef. And after that will be Karen Lang.
Hello, Mayor, council members. My name is Axel Rappchef. I'm the current Vice President of Yakima Valley Seniors, Inc., Incorporated, and the newly-elected president for 2026. I'm here today on behalf of the Harmon Center and Seniors, Inc. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Just a bit of background about Seniors, Inc., we work within the Harmon Center. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. Our mission is to support programs within the Harmon Center. Some examples include the lunch program, Saturday breakfast, coffee bar. We collaboratively work with the city of Yakima in financing maintenance needs for the center, specifically replacing the front door electronic sign out on Summit View, providing funds to upgrade outdated fire alarm systems, replacing tables, chairs, coffee machines, and the kitchen, just to name a few. The Harmon Center is more than just a building. It's a lifeline, as we all know, a place where Yakima's older adults find community, purpose, connection, health, support. Every day, approximately 300 seniors come through the door seeking companionship, physical activity, education, and a sense of belonging. For some, it's the only place they truly feel seen. It's a safe haven. Our senior population continues to grow. The demand for programs, services, and safe gathering spaces grows with it. Seniors, Inc. has been steadfast partner, supporting the needs, providing volunteer hours, fundraising efforts, advocacy, so the Harmon Center can continue to thrive. We cannot do this alone. Seniors, Inc. is diligently working with the Harmon Foundation, Concerned Prominent Citizens, other foundations, along with Matt Brown, to craft a plan for the future of the Harmon Center. Contracts and covenants surrounding the gifting of the center from the Harmon Foundation to the city of Yakima is very complex and will take time. Tonight, we ask the council to continue to recognize the essential role of the Harmon Center plays in the well-being of our community and give our team time to work a plan, together work a plan, to sustain the Harmon Center for the future. Yesterday, I was informed a donation on behalf of the Harmon Center was received by the city, reducing the 2026 budget shortfall to 140K.
Excuse me, but your time is up.
Anyway, let me continue. I'm sure we can all agree...
I'm sorry, but your time is up. But thank you. We hear your heart. We hear your words. We're listening. Thank you.
So simply asking for time to craft this plan to go forward and keeping the center open.
Thank you. Karen Lang. And after Karen will be Andrew Reyes.
Good evening. I'm kind of just pretty disturbed over those budget cuts of the city. Public safety is the number-one responsibility of the government, and yet we're cutting police, firemen, a fire station, and animal control. But I'm mainly here to talk about Harmon Center. I don't need to tell you how much the Harmon Center is a lifeline for seniors, as you've heard it loud and clear from many people already, how violent it is to our community, but it seems to not be a real priority. I'd like to know how it's okay to close the only place for seniors to go. As you know, the Harmon Center was gifted for the purpose of a Harmon Center, and the city only had to maintain it with the budgeting. Yakima seniors worked very hard and paid their taxes their whole lives. They were the ones that worked to make Yakima a very once, very great city to live in. The plan would take away the only place seniors have to relax, share a meal with friends, have companionship, and do many activities. Remember, all of you will one day be a senior, too, and hope that you have a place like that to go to. All the trips and tours Laurie plans by the Harmon Center pay for themselves. They do not cost the city anything. All the Northwest Day Trips sell out quickly in January for the entire year and have wait lists. They allow seniors of all ages, including many over 80 years old, to be able to go out of town on a one-day, neat trip. The U.S. and World Trips and Tours, which are usually full, make the city a lot of money. I know for a fact that just one of those trips alone, the city got a commission of over $11,000. With several trips for the year, the city would have been able to have made between $60,000 and $80,000 this past year from the Harmon Center. My question is, why is the money from all those trips not put back into the Harmon Center budget instead of into the general fund? Could you please figure out why that happens and how that can change? I have high hopes for Mrs. Baker and Mr. Warner, who both have good reputations of being honest and reputable. Hopefully, they can be miracle workers and fix the city's budget crisis. The city has known for at least a year that COVID money was going away and that our tax dollars would be at a deficit at the end of the year. I'd like to know what has been done to try to secure any alternative funding to help support these things.
Karen, I'm sorry.
Has anyone written grants? Pardon?
Your time is up. But thank you very much.
There's lots of other alternative fundings out there, and finding somebody to do grants would be very helpful.
Thank you. Your time is up. Okay, Andrew Reyes is next, and right behind him is Susan Whitman.
Hi, Andrew Reyes, resident of Yakima. A little bit off-topic here, my own personal issues, sorry. But we got, I wanted to touch on some things that I noticed we seem to have lost the nature in operating in an equal-opportunity lending economy, is what I understood that we were doing here. And now they've taken out of context all of our basic powers to those lending options and to the, of the public. And we all share those basic powers and liabilities, and liabilities, you know? That's not just one, you know, LLC's responsibility or accountability. Those are all the public's account, you know? And we all share the same basic accounts and accountability. And we've lost the trust and really violated the nature. Really want to get back to that nature that was violated and really is, you know, speaking about gifts, you know, we all are receiving the same equal gift from nature. You know, this is a natural process that we're all living and experiencing equally. And our, you know, like our pledge says, equal justice for all to, and liberty for all, to those basic lending pledges and that was established and incorporated, you know, years before any of us were even around. So that's in our natural DNA as we grow and evolve with nature. And nature keeps consigning us and pushing us forward, you know, naturally through life. And it's a beautiful thing. I wish that we could share this nature, but yet we're still trying to figure out our lending options. So, you know, nature is a beautiful thing if we can learn to live and enjoy it and experience it together. But we got to figure out these lending options, and nature is calling, and it's due, you know, we're due to answer for those violations of nature as a result of those lost practices. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Okay, next is Susan Whitman, and following Susan is Kailin Dunn.
Good evening. I'm just going to get straight to the point. I'm opposed to the closure of Station 92. This decision would not only degrade service to the West Side, it would undermine the public safety for the entire city of Yakima. Staffing at Station 92 with the Engine 92 remains the most affordable, efficient, and responsible approach to managing and reducing community risk. Maintaining an operational unit at Station 92 ensures the balanced coverage, mitigates response time gaps, and preserves citywide emergency response system that the city depends on. When one station is removed from the network, the entire network suffers. That is not a theoretical impact. It is a predictable, measurable, and ultimately borne by the city of Yakima... Or excuse me, this reticent, renaissance, reticence? You know who I mean. Pressures prompting this proposal are not a West Side issue. It is a city issue. It stemmed from longstanding structural challenges in budgeting, staffing, and planning. Closing Station 92 does not resolve those challenges. It simply shifts the burden to the neighborhoods and the citizens who rely on timely emergency response. It reduces capacity at a time when call volumes continue to have risen and when a community needs more support, not less. Station 92 continues operational... Their continued operational is an essential piece of Yakima's overall risk management strategy. It protects lives, property, and the city's broader responsibility to provide equitable emergency services to all citizens of Yakima. Eliminating that capacity neither is fiscally prudent nor operationally sound. I urge you to reject the closure of Station 92 and instead pursue solutions that address the underlying citywide issues without compromising public safety. Yakima deserves a fire service that is strategically grounded in responsibility, sustainability, I can't talk tonight, and fairness. And that begins with keeping Station 92 open. You and the councils that have come before you have made a promise, a promise to keep citizens safe and cared for.
Susan, I'm sorry, but your time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kailin Dunn, and after that will be Yanni Alberto. You know who you are, I'm thinking. Okay, go ahead, please.
Thank you, City Council, and thank you, Mayor, for listening to all of us tonight. My name is Kailin Dunn. I'm a downtown business owner of Yakima. And you guys have already heard why I'm here the last time. Here on the potential closure of Yakima Lions Pool. I understand, you know, my hope is you guys find, you're able to find a way to keep that open year-round, but I understand the budget shortfall. I absolutely understand that, being a business owner myself. I have an idea, though. A city the size of Yakima needs a pool open year-round. That has to happen. We have an outdoor pool that's open throughout the summer, but we have, if you guys are closing the Yakima Lions Pool down in the winter, we will have no public pool for people to get exercise, for children and adults to get, to learn how to swim. So I'm here to ask you today to keep a pool in Yakima open 12 months of the year. If that means we have an outdoor pool in the summer, you could take the Yakima Lions Pool in the summer. You could do all of the maintenance that you need to. You can close it down, keep the chemicals in it. And you could actually move the lifeguards from the summer to the winter, so you don't have to lay off people. You could have people work year-round, and we would cut the, cut your budget from what it could have been down. But I understand, I understand your predicament, but city of Yakima needs this. The citizens need this, and please don't take this away. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you for being here. Next is Yanni, and after that is Carla Craig. Do you need some help? How about we get the microphone closer to you?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Janita. And for Yakima Community Center, we want it to be open because I learned karate there, so we wanted to keep it open. So for me, it's so important, maybe to other kids. And it's free, but maybe other karate's are not free. So we wanted to keep open because it's important to me and maybe it's important to others, to other kids. So we want it to be open.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. I'm kind of waiting for a group bow. I just feel like it's waiting to happen. Yeah, or we could bow to you. Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Great job, guys.
And our last speaker tonight is Carla Craig.
So good evening, council members, and thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Carla Craig, and I live here in Yakima. So I am here because the planned closure of the Washington Fruit Community Center and its Beyond the Bell program is not just concerning, it is alarming, harmful, and unacceptable to the families who rely on this program every single day. My daughter has attended Beyond the Bell for several years, and this program has been life-changing to her. She began as a shy, uncertain child, and through the commitment and compassion of the staff, she grew confident, social, and secure. This center has done what many programs cannot. It has created a safe, welcoming, and nurturing environment where every child feels seen, supported, and truly valued. For working families like mine, Beyond the Bell is not optional. It is essential. It is the difference between children being supervised or not, supported or not, safe or not. It provides structured academic guidance and positive role models at the most critical time of the day, when school ends and parents are still at work. Eliminating this program removes a foundation that countless families depend on. What makes this decision even more troubling is the timing. Closing the center in the middle of the school year leaves parents scrambling to secure childcare, supervision, and safety with almost no warning. This is just, it's not just an inconvenience. It creates a risk for all children and puts families in impossible situations. If the closure cannot be reversed, the very least the council can do is keep the center open through the end of the school year. Families deserve time, stability, and respect. The Washington Fruit Community Center is far more than a building. It is a cornerstone for safety, growth, stability, and community trust. Closing it removes one of the few reliable, positive spaces our children have. I strongly urge this council to reconsider this decision, not for convenience, but for the safety, well-being, and future of the children and families. not for convenience, but for the safety, well-being, and future of the children and families you are elected to serve. I urge you to do what's right. Our children deserve stability, safety, and support, not disruption. Please reconsider this closure. Our community is counting on you, and thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you, Carla. Mr. Beeler, is there anyone online who wishes to address the council this evening?
No, Mayor Byers, there's not.
Thank you. Then that will end the public participation portion of our meeting. And we are going into, there's no council reports tonight. We're going into our consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda considered routine by the city council.
I wanted to make a comment about number five.
Okay, open discussion for the other, then go ahead, please.
I would like to move that we remove from the agenda items 9B, 9C, 9D, and 9E.
A second.
So we have a motion to remove from the agenda items 9B, C, D, and E. Is that correct?
Correct.
So we have a motion by Councilwoman Glenn and a second by Councilwoman Roy.
Discussion?
Discussion, yes.
It's procedural, I believe, so I don't, like the consent agenda, I think we just have to vote on it per our rules.
So why are you, what's your motion? Why do you want to do that?
I've been listening to the Olympia talking. I've been listening to the Yakima School Board talking. Everybody wants to raise taxes. I said, I just, we got to draw the line somewhere. We can't just raise taxes anytime we feel like it. And I think that working within a budget is possible. I think that we can find a way to do everything that the people here would like to see us do under the current cuts that we've already discussed.
I have to agree with, on what Rick said. We, we already, a lot of people already hurting with the taxes. People, we're already struggling, a lot of people are struggling with these taxes. And the community voted no on, I know it was close, on the property tax on the levy. But I do believe we do have things in our budget, and working with our community partners, we could still make these programs happen without putting more burden onto the communities that we are serving.
Any other comments? Well, I'd like to make a comment. So I'm not in agreement with removing those items from the agenda. It takes away the council's ability to discuss in front of the community certain decisions and for the community to hear some of the impacts of those. I think, you know, part of parliamentary procedure is to have discussion that allows input and people hearing that and being part of what's happening in the community. We certainly are engaged with hearing that tonight. Also, I did vote to put the levy on the ballot to let the community decide. One of the main reasons I did that is because I am concerned about about reduction of public safety services. And the levy did not pass. However, I want to make note here that it was 49% to 51%. It was very, very close, which means people also are concerned about some of the same things. And I think it's good to have discussion about that. And I, for one, wanted to discuss the 1/10th of 1% sales tax that would support public safety in our community. So I'll be voting against this particular motion. I think this discussion is healthy, and I think it's important.
Me too, and I ran on public safety. It's, to me, it's the number-one role that we have as a council is to keep our community safe. And the 1/10th of 1% sales tax would make sure that we don't have to get rid of some officers. We might not be able to have to get rid of some analysts. Maybe not the animal control. I don't know how it would cover it, but it would help alleviate any of those shortfalls.
Now, I'm not sure if Mr. Warner or Vicki had new information to present on the 1% as well, too. We always have new people in the audience or listening. So just making sure we go step by step and look at the options as well. When we get there.
If the chief is out in the audience, I guess he could give an update. I do think they have given some new information on the 1/10th. What it is, is it's, the legislature provided the council's 1/10th, the ability to pass that to support just police or some other limited things, like indigent offense.
Vote on the motion first.
Yeah, so that's the background of what it is. Chief, I don't know if you have anything to add to that. Did I capture the update on where the public safety sales tax is?
I get a point of order here. We have a motion on the floor. This is, we need to.
Yeah.
So thank you, Chief, for being prepared.
Sorry.
I'm not sure that you read that after this particular vote is going to be productive. And I honestly don't see this motion as being productive. I think it takes away from council discussion about individual motions. I think it deprives our, certainly our community members of hearing open discussion about those things. It's like transparency, so I will not be voting to support it. Any other comments?
So yes is to take them off, no is to keep them on? I just want to be clear before we vote.
Yes is to take them off.
Okay, and no is to keep them on, okay.
And I think under the circumstances, I'd like to have a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Byers?
No.
Deceo?
No.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
No.
Roy?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes for three. All right, now we'll move to the consent agenda, unless there's another motion under new discussion? No, okay.
Put them back on.
Okay, items discussed are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. A council member may request to remove an item from the consent agenda, and if approved, it will be placed on the regular agenda for discussion and consideration. Does any council person wish to remove an item from the agenda?
The two things.
Yeah. Right, then would you read the agenda, please?
Item 7A is approval minutes from the November 12, 2025, city council study session and November 18, 2025, city council regular meeting. Item B is a resolution adopting the city council 2026 regular business meeting schedule.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
So we have a motion, my Deputy Mayor Brown, and second by Councilwoman Deceo, to approve the consent agenda as read. And now we'll take a roll call.
Brown?
Yes.
Byers?
Yes.
Deceo?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
All right, the motion is approved 7-0. The resolution is adopted. Thank you, council. We have no public hearing this evening in each department items. Oh, that's where we're at. Went right over to the other side. I really hate it when the agenda splits up like that. So we're going to have Craig Warner and Gary Blue come forward talking about the status of council, the status on council adopted motions previous to this meeting and directions from the November 12, 2025, November 18, 2025, council meetings.
So I am going to go ahead and start. I have some remarks to make. They were made before tonight, so, before what just occurred. So forgive me if it's confusing. I'll try to self-correct. So good evening, everyone. Tonight, we are addressing a $9 million general fund budget. This shortfall is a result of rising costs, revenue that haven't kept up pace with inflation, and a failure of a recent levy that would have helped maintain current service levels in police, fire, parks, and streets. Like households and businesses across the country, this city has been hit hard by inflation, too. We're paying more for everything from copy paper to gas and utilities to asphalt. Everything in the city costs more, too. And because state law requires us to adopt a balanced budget, service level reductions will be necessary if no new revenue is identified. The budget on tonight's agenda includes $9 million in cuts. It also includes two months of one-time funding to keep Lion's Pool open through February so high school swim teams can finish their seasons. That's where tonight's discussion begins and where these gentlemen pick up. Without additional revenue, there's no ongoing funding to maintain current service levels in our core departments. You'll also see that in the budget presentation later. For those tuning in for the first time, this budget is a result of over a year of work by this council and the staff. We've held public hearings, town halls, and conducted a community survey with over 2,000 responses. A citizen budget committee appointed by the council spent months reviewing the general fund. The council has heard hours of public comment and taken this process very seriously. Tonight's decisions are not about how much the council or city staff value all of these services. We all agree that everything is important. The simply, the city simply does not have enough money to continue providing the same level of service without revenue. Over the past year and a half, we reviewed every department. Many 10% cuts have already been made to administrative areas like HR, finance, and IT. Over the years, we've made many more cuts, like reducing street maintenance and little things like eliminating the leaf pickup in the fall. Meanwhile, Yakima has grown to 100,000 people, increased demand on an already stretched staff. The problem is structural. Cities in Washington are funded in very limited ways, and the council only has a few tools available at its disposal. The legislature has placed strict limits on how cities can pay for themselves, even though every city has different needs. It is a very difficult box that the state puts cities in. Most of our general fund dollars go to four core services, police, fire, parks, and streets. These services are where your local dollars go and where you feel the greatest impact in the community. These important services compete for the same limited pool of local dollars. And when those dollars don't grow with inflation, the city is forced into difficult choices. This year's budget crunch didn't happen overnight. It's the result of years of inflation and limited revenue growth. And it's this council that's facing it head-on, and they deserve credit for that. We know the people are passionate about keeping services. We also know people don't want taxes. The city can't do both. The voters rejected the property tax levy. If no new revenues approved, service levels will be reduced. We have seen and heard a lot of misinformation out there, so as people are tuning in for the first time, we can say a couple of things, too. We've heard concerns about roundabouts, buses, and even the community Christmas tree this year. It's important to clarify, those things and many others are funded by state and federal grants or outside community partners. Legally, those dollars cannot be used for general operations like pools or police. Finally, I want to thank the council for their leadership. These are not easy decisions. By working together with the community, with partners, and with a long-term vision, we can find a sustainable path forward for Yakima. Thank you all. And I'm going to hand it to these two gentlemen. We've got Finance Director Craig Warner, Assistant City Manager Gary Blue. They're going to lead the presentation on some of the motions that have been made regarding all of these topics and get everybody kind of up to speed.
Good evening, council. So I'll go ahead and start us off, and Craig and I are going to take team up here. I sound loud. Am I loud right now? Okay.
Great.
Okay, so over the course of the last two council meetings, November 12 and November 18, council passed a number of motions. Those included a couple of motions around revenue-neutral options for, general fund revenue-neutral options for the Harmon Center, the Washington Fruit Community Center, directing the city manager to speak to school districts regarding Lion's Pool, motion on Franklin Pool, a motion on lean performance studies, information on utility tax and public safety sales tax, and directing staff to keep Lion's Pool open until the end of February. So we wanted to provide an update on those motions. And I'm going to, there's a couple of those motions that Randy is going to address, so I'm going to have him, yeah. And I was going to ask, was he going to be voice of God tonight? Or he was going to come up to the podium. So folks who only hear Randy over the speakers, this is Randy.
Good evening, council members, Mayor. Randy Beeler, I am in charge of Communications and Public Affairs of the city. With regard to the motion about Franklin Pool design and repair being added to the city's legislative priorities, that's been done. Staff has been working for the last several months putting together the city's work plan at the state and federal levels. In next week's council packet, I'm going to provide you with a status update about the legislative priorities process and where that current status stands. City staff recently, this is the other motion. City staff recently met with the staff from the state auditor's office regarding the motion requesting the auditor's office conduct a lean performance audit evaluating all departments and operations supported by the general fund, and it also said any related enterprise fund processes that impact overall city efficiency. A comprehensive audit of all general fund departments and operations and any related enterprise fund processes is not really a service that the state auditor's office provides. The center, it's part of the state auditor's office called the Center for Government Innovation. And that office provides lean consultation services, but to review very specific processes, not whole department operations. Over the past eight years or so, the city has used that center's lean services to study and improve processes, including purchase card reconciliation, issuing excavation permits, and obtaining certificates of insurance for projects and contracts. All very, very exciting topics, I'm sure. I will also include in your packet for next week a summary of the work that various city departments have done with the auditor's office over the last few years to improve efficiency through that lean process.
If we decided to ask them to come and do something, what's the timeline? How long would it be before they came?
You know, it really depends. So really what we would be focusing on is the lean process, part of what they do. I mean, it varies depending on the complexity of the process that they are asked to study. For example, the excavation permit process. I don't know how long it took to initiate, but the whole process to go through, it took about 18 months. And that's this little tiny piece, just excavation permits, many processes within the permitting area of the city. And this is just one of those, and that's what really those lean processes focus on. There are performance audits that are performed by a staff at the auditor's office, generally of state agencies, and moreover, of issues that may affect more than just one local jurisdiction. A couple of years ago, they did a performance audit on issuing permits under the Growth Management Act, but that affects all cities, all counties, and that's really what they do. What we learned in talking with one of, with the guy who heads the performance audit side of the state auditor's office, they're booked out right now until 2027, and they can get done about 12 audits per year.
What is the cost of those audits?
The performance audits, so we're talking, just remember, we're talking about two very different things, the lean process and the audits process. There's no charge locally, or there's no charge to the agency that is audited.
On the lean side, so if we were to pick, like, building permits, that is that, I know there was a multitude of things that they could look at on lean side of things. I just know there's a lot of people that I still hear from the building side of things that maybe we could speed up on some of those things. I don't know, but maybe that's something as we look at.
Yeah, there was also.
I don't know what they look at, like what in the lean?
One of the other things that, with that particular round, which I think was maybe 2022, when that lean process went done with the excavation permits, they also looked at, you know, these are terms that I'm not familiar with, but I think, engineering permits, but that one did not get moved forward for a number of different reasons, part of which includes capacity of the center to actually do this work.
Capacity of the people who are doing.
Of the, yeah, the government, the Center for Government Innovations at the auditor's office. They only have so much capacity.
Is there any cost to the city for that?
No. And also, I will mention, probably, gosh, it's probably about four years ago, maybe, the entire senior staff went through a multi-hour training with a staff member from the Government Innovation Center to familiarize the senior staff with the lean process and how it works and what its intent is.
Any noticeable results from that?
Yes, it initiated, it initiated, one, one of the things it initiated was the excavation permit. It also initiated a process to look at the purchasing card, we call them P cards, purchasing, city credit cards, how the, how those bills are reconciled. So not the issuing, not the usage, but how they're reconciled.
Thank you.
So then the next meeting you're coming with what?
I'm going to give you a summary of what the city has done with the center through the lean process over the last few years. Just a little summary for it, of it. I've already kind of done that right now, so maybe it's not necessary.
Well, do you need us? Well, do you need us to give you direction on the lean side of things? No? Okay.
Nope.
We can get in line.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Beeler.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ren. Then there was also a number of council questions, so I've listed those, yeah, there we are. We've listed those here, I won't go over each one, but these were ones where the council, a council member had asked a question, and a member of staff had said, yes, we will get back to you. So, and the last question on there is, can we hear the progress on the November 12th motions? So, the answer to that is yes. So that's what we're going to do here tonight. Through the course of the presentation of both Craig and I, we will either provide progress on those motions or answer the questions that have been raised here by council. I am with that. I think we go over to Greg.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, council. You've seen this slide, this version of this slide a couple of times. The last time was on November 18th, and that is the column there that's listed 2026 proposed budget for November 18th. There is an amendments column, and then what is right now, as of today, the revised or proposed budget that we're, we'll look at adopting later on this evening. There was a couple of changes since the last one. We've got about $200,000 less in beginning fund balance coming into 2026. And ultimately, what that was, was council approved some 2025 budget amendments at the November 18th meeting, so that takes that into account. And then we've also factored in on the expenditures, a couple of adjustments, as budgets are one of those things that kind of shift with the sand a little bit, and we're always constantly trying to make it perfect, but we never will. So at some point, you've got to stop looking and just accept that you've got the closest numbers you have. But the biggest change in that expenditure number is, we did add the increase for the two additional months for Lyons Pool. Okay? So those are, those are the big changes. So if you look at this right now, the general fund's beginning fund balance projection is 11.773 million, with revenues of just over 88 million and expenses of 88.4. So you're going to spend about $400,000 overall more than your revenues for 2026 at this point. Your ending fund balance then will go down by that amount to 11.39 million. Your 12% reserve is 10.6. So at this point, to have a minimum reserve of 12% or savings, you have about 781,000 more in that savings account than your policy requires you to have, okay? As of right now.
You're saying the two months was $53,000?
It actually was more than that, but we had a couple of other small adjustments that offset that. The two months was actually in expense, it was $106,692.
So I'm very sympathetic to the idea of keeping these programs open, and the big issue seems to be a matter of time. If we said, let's set up the budget to maybe keep things operating through the first quarter of 2026, and that would allow us time to pursue other options and still comply with the budget rule, is that something that could be done?
If that's what council proposed to do, the one thing that I want to make sure that you understand is that reserve is really like one-time funds, right? So that money comes in, you get your paycheck, you pay your bills. If you have any leftover, maybe you put it into savings. You maybe are putting that aside for a vacation, right? At the end of the day, if all of a sudden you don't have the money in that savings account to go on vacation, you don't go on vacation. Okay? So ultimately...
I'm going to, instead of vacation, we're going to call it a rainy day fund, just in case your water heater breaks down.
There you go.
Right? So, yeah.
You don't go on vacation, as councilists, so.
Just trying to make sure that people understand that, you know, in, in, in non-government terms, I guess. So, yeah, your water heater, you have some money set aside for that.
In, in household or business terms, we have lowered our reserves to 12% to make, even make the budget that we're suggesting right now. We dare not go beyond that extra money, the one-time money, we're calling it, and in, in most of our budgets, we're looking to increase. We really need to look at getting our reserves back up to 16%. So I think that to deplete that down to nothing, I'm not sure is the wisest thing to do either.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. The reserve was 16.7%, which is two months' reserve. And ultimately, because of the way the revenues come in, with property tax coming in only really twice a year, you have to have that money in there for cash flow purposes to be able to keep the government operating, and also make sure that if something does come up that's unexpected, you know, a recession, you know, the last issue related to COVID, when that first hit, the sales tax plummeted at the beginning, because we didn't know what was going on, but we had reserves to fall back on to be able to make sure that we could, we could keep the government open and operating. And luckily, things worked out overall in terms of the funding that came back in. But ultimately, that's what the reserve's about, is to make sure that we can still function and keep the government moving forward and paying our bills with the people that work with us.
And so the 12% is a two-month?
12%, 16.7% is really two months.
And what is 12%?
12% is about a month and a half.
About eight weeks, six weeks.
About six weeks.
Six weeks. And if we had any major emergency, we'd be sunk, just like if you don't make your house payment.
Well, as you look at it in a positive way, though, I think we have people who are working for alternative solutions from the private sector to help keep the Harmon Center open, to help keep the Washington Fruit Center open, to help keep Lyons Pool open. And keeping everything open to allow them time to put those plans together, I think, is a good idea. I'd like to see us make it happen.
Yeah. I, I mean, I, the good news, I mean, there is good news here, is that this wasn't this way.
Correct.
Right? I mean, let's, let's be honest with the budget on this aspect, is that this has taken us two years almost of getting to where this thing is actually now at a, one, accurate, two, actually showing some money that's actually in there, because a lot of this stuff has been, it's just not been very clear to the public. And, and so, you know, I, I also want to say, too, is like, the public has said, you know, we didn't know this stuff was going on, and we didn't know all of these things were happening. And I'm, it breaks my heart that that is what has been said, because we have been talking about this, I mean, we only have, we have 52 weeks in a year, and I think we meet, you know, two or three times a month, four times a month sometimes, maybe even five or six times a month in certain months. And we've been talking about this for probably the good point of about 85% of those meetings for the last year and a half. And so that's, it's a frustration, but it's also, I think, also a positive, though, to see these numbers at an actual, were there, because we weren't there.
Yeah. I mean, a good point, and I want to point it out, the revenues are $88 million. The expenditures are $88 million. There's about a $400,000 difference. That expenditure budget has a lot of pain in it. There's $9 million worth of pain, because when we started, that number was $97 million. So we've found a way to make reductions in those expenditures, and I think that's really a lot of what you've heard from the community, and you've been hearing it for a long time, is ultimately, that $9 million and where that means we're going to cut. And ultimately, that's really, we've already made $3 million that has already been in there. And I know probably the biggest headline there was probably Franklin Pool. But there was a lot of other pain in that $3 million. The police already took some reductions, so did the fire. Finance took $150,000. There was multiple things that had to be done to take that $3 million, and we got down to this $6 million basically here that's left. And ultimately, right now, this is what we're proposing, was, is the $3 million for police, the $1,750,000 for fire, and then the $1.4 million for parks. So like I say, there's, there's good news in the numbers, because we've found a way to get these balanced, the revenues and expenditures balanced. But there is a lot of pain to that, that overall, we're going to end up having to, as a community, understand what that means. And I think, I think that's what we're hearing tonight, is, is there's a lot of the community that's understanding what that pain is and looking for alternatives.
I would say, though, too, the pain was much worse than even what this was projected at 9 million. I mean, it was projected 22 million for '26. It's double, and we got it down to that piece without having to have the extreme pain that this piece is. So I hear the pain aspect with this, obviously, but, I mean, I think it is, it's the first time that I've been on council where we can actually say there's, we're not sitting there bleeding, you know, a $5 million going into the next year, you know?
Understood.
And I think it's a, excuse me, go ahead.
I was just going to say that, you know, I agree. I think one of the things that have become very apparent is that people are beginning to understand the seriousness of the situation. Because of that, we're having conversation, opportunities for partners in the community, investments from individuals in the community. All of those things are going to take time, and I think that, you know, using, it's going to use some of the one-time money. We need to look at how much, because now we have Lyons Pool till the end of February, anyway, maybe longer, if we did agree, if we read it the first quarter of every, of this year, right? Coming up in '26, we have the Harmon Center, and then we have the Washington Fruit Center, all of them with the same high level of community interest and need. And so if what we're saying is, we're going to do all three of those for three months, it's going to increase the impact on the one-time use money. The other thing is, realistically, if we decide to do a request for funding proposals, RFPs, to see who in the community might partner with us to take responsibility for the Harmon Center or the Washington Fruit Center or Lyons Pool, that's longer than a three-month process. That's going to be at least six months if we, if we go that route. So then we're looking at all three of those programs again for the half of your six months, and where is that going to leave us with the one-time money? So those are the things we need to think about.
I'm just going to say, you have made this understandable, and the people that have served before, I don't want to throw any stones, but it was all a bunch of confusion. I really appreciate the fact that you have quantified it in such a way that we can look at it and understand what's going on, so I appreciate the work that you've done on this.
Well, thank you. I, I give a lot of credit to Vicki and to Gary and to the other staff, because ultimately, this isn't just me doing this, this is all of us, this is a team effort, so.
I'll give credit to the council and for, to the council for hiring our city manager, Vicki Baker, and then to Vicki for the staff that she's hiring to help support her as the city moves forward.
Thank you.
So ultimately, so this was the proposed cuts or reductions that we were talking about, and you've seen these slides, we've just put a little different twist on them with the background. The police was $3 million, this is 12 police officer positions, one police sergeant. There's four community service officers, which is your parking enforcement and your animal control. You have one analyst supervisor and one analyst. We're going to adjust some funding for one CSO officer from the general fund to the three-tenths fund. And then also, this reduces the contribution that we make to the Humane Society by $50,000, and that's because of the animals that we take to that facility. For the fire, I think this one's pretty self-explanatory in terms of the recommendation from the beginning, that I've been here since April, has been that Station 92 would, would be closed. We have worked really hard to work on trying to find a way to, to keep all of those staff available, because we know there's an overtime issue that we're trying to work on very diligently to make sure that we keep our overtime as low as we, as we possibly can, and we may be able to use some of those overtime dollars that are budgeted to help keep those other positions funded and in the budget. So in other words, there's a relief factor potentially for, for fire that's not present today.
A retention of staff.
Correct, yes.
I do want to say, though, that I've had multiple people reaching out to me through email primarily, expressing concerns about closing Station 92, because it does leave a big hole in some sense of the word in terms of that particular area. There have been lots of suggestions about ways to equalize the loss across all the, all the city fire stations, and so I'm hoping that that will be considered. But the other thing I want to recognize is that the money is a council decision. How that problem is solved within that department is a department decision. So that decision will be up to our fire chief and the unions and all the people working together on how to resolve that. Yeah.
And then the, the last piece of that $6 million cut was the Parks Department, and this was, as we've, I think we've mentioned all of them, I think there's only one that we want to make sure is also mentioned, which is, first, the Washington Fruit Center, the Lyons Pool, and Harmon Center, those would basically remove the general fund contributions for those. And then the last one, and the one I, I just mentioned, was the 16% reduction in parks maintenance. This is a big deal. This potentially means that bathrooms at parks are not open, so when, when you go to the, to the park, you may not be able to use the restroom if, if you need to, because ultimately, that's a very expensive thing to be able to keep open, and unfortunately, we have lots of people doing the wrong things in our, in our bathrooms, yeah. It also means maybe we don't mow as much, or we may not be able to water, because those are all the things that are the parks maintenance. So just wanted to make sure, I know I heard a lot about the other three, I just wanted to make sure that fourth one was brought up. So I'm going to pass this back over to Gary.
All right. So, and I just want to add, so Craig kind of went through the details of the $6 million cuts. We also already had $3 million in cuts that council has had a chance to review, but just for the folks in the, in the crowd, that there was another $3 million there. So there was a couple of motions regarding revenue neutral, and just wanted a quick discussion, kind of some of the complexities around that. So just kind of three items here. So the, the buildings, so this was specifically around the Harmon Center and the Washington Fruit Center. The buildings will require some costs, even if they're shuttered, so there's still, we're looking at minimal utilities, keeping the buildings warm, keeping some lights on, some maintenance, so occasional walkthroughs to make sure things aren't damaged, and if something happens and something is damaged, we'll need to be able to repair it, things like pest control, security. So there will still be some costs associated with having these buildings, even if we close them, and we don't have a lot of operational history to say that's what this amount is. So we have some estimates of those. The changes as we approach, like, if we look at changing fees, and that's come up, some of the folks in the audience had mentioned that during public comment, oh, you could charge more. Here, one of the things that's come up is, we have some non-city residents that are using our facilities, can we charge them more, and then how does that affect revenue? What we don't know is the, technical term would be like the price elasticity, but that's sort of, will people pay it? So we can raise the fee and say, well, and if we get the same number of people who have come before, then yes, so we'll do this much. What we don't know is, we may raise the fees, and it may cause the demand to go down. So as we're looking at that, we were kind of making a guess there, too. And then donations, because we talk a lot about donations, those can be complex. I mean, we have people who donate cash, we get the cash in board, that's, that's great. We talked about the $50,000 for the Harmon Center, which will be on, to accept that donation will be on council agenda next week, and that one we put in the budget. So that, that is a donation. But if we look, people can also make pledges, and pledges with nonprofits and things like that, a good pledge rate, in other words, actually being able to collect on the pledges that people make, is about 80 to 90%. So as we're looking at trying to fill some of these gaps with potential donations and things like that, even if we have people who've said, hey, we'll pledge this amount, in reality, we may not get all that money. I did want to add, though, in this note, that the Yakima Valley Community Foundation has made up accounts for, and they're labeled Harmon Center, Washington Fruit Center, Park Maintenance, I think, community service. So they have different buckets that, so if people are interested, and we heard that after the last meeting, it was like, where can I go? Well...
How are we going to get that out to the public so that they can do that?
There was some email traffic today, looking at how, how can we publicly... There was some email traffic today, looking at how, how can we publicly release that information and get that out there? So we'll put it out through our channels and then hopefully it will go viral. And, and so people will have that, that opportunity. So for the folks who are, you know, very adamant and big supporters of these facilities, hopefully they can get it out in their networks, too. Because we can hit all the regular channels, but as we know, that only gets so many folks. So, so that's where we would hope that, that social media would go and, and, and come off of. But there is accounts set up, so if people do want to do that.
I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Before we move any further. So this doesn't really give me any sort of numbers of where, where we're at with, you know, that, that was the motion, was to look at, how do we get to that?
Yeah, so those are the next slides, and we'll talk about.
Doesn't look. Oh, it's way down there, okay.
So it's, it'll be one of the alternatives on there is the, the revenue, well, and what it will say is you would need this much in donations to make it revenue neutral. And, and I just, you know, wanted to provide some of the, so, so I had a, I reviewed business plans a lot over my, my career, and all business plans show making money in the third year. But most, all businesses don't make money in the third year. So we could write a revenue neutral, it's really what is our likelihood of being able to make that happen. And I think with some of the facilities, the likelihood is higher than with others to say, boy, I think we can close this gap with donations or to get to that.
It just sounds like there's a lot of ifs, big ifs.
There is, yeah, and that's what I just wanted to, to say. So we can present something, but there will be a certain amount of risk factor in that. If, if council adopts like, oh, okay, this will be revenue neutral, we'll be able to make this. But we, we, we will be relying on additional fees, we'll be relying on donations, and how much we can rely on those is, is a question.
My apologies, this slide deck looked a little different than how it looked prior. I didn't realize it was like five slides down, I thought it was right afterwards, so that's my apologies.
Oh, no, no worries.
I was looking for the slide, I'm like, it was there.
Okay, yeah.
So.
Hopefully, hopefully it's there.
Yeah, the, the other question I had, though, is it was brought up tonight that there was a bigger donation to actually cut the cost in half at what was needed in the budget. I believe Axel brought that up earlier. And I'm wondering, that, that seems like more than substantial than the fifty thousand. There must have been, is there another donation?
There's a rumor of another donation, I, I believe. So I don't, I don't, I don't know that there, there's another donation out there. So the, the, the gap number in Harmon Center that Axel mentioned, which was a hundred and forty thousand, is a, is where we can get to with increased fees, the donation that we, council is going to be accepting next week, as well as some reductions in staffing. So that's where that, it's a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand. It's actually going to be less than that because we realized in the expenses, we had the.
Mothball costs.
Mothball costs, and so we were able to pull those back out.
So the question I have is, it sounds like we are compliant with the state mandate for a balanced budget if we use this process, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, the, the requirement for a balanced budget is, is that your revenue expenditures balance, and if they don't, then you have to be able to have reserves available to be able to use to balance. And so ultimately, as long as you're doing that, you're meeting the state requirements.
And during the course of the year, we're going to be monitoring this, so if there are issues, we can bring it up and address it.
Yes.
For example, we said, we're going to go ahead and keep the Harmon Center open with the understanding that this money's going to come in. Then we can comply with the state law for the balanced budget. And then six months from now, if it doesn't work out, then we can address it again. Is that right?
Yes, yeah, I mean, ultimately, that's the hope, is that on a, on a quarterly basis, we can sit down and, and whatever the council would like to see, and if that is these programs and where they're going in terms of, from their budget versus, you know, whatever the council adopts, I should say, because that's still up to the, the council to decide. We can make that something that we can keep in front of the council for you to be able to monitor. Yep, absolutely.
The other thing I've kind of been wondering about, I, I know that the Harmon Foundation donated this facility to the city, are there any ramifications if we shut it down? And is it the same with the Washington Fruit Center? Are there issues there that we have to deal with if we shut them down?
Yeah, I think those are all things that, that, you know, have to go basically through a, a legal review of what were the requirements for those dollars when we accepted them, and, and we would have to look at that, for sure. Yep.
Go ahead, John.
All right. So looking at Lions Pool, as we look at the baseline operations, and that means in the budget that is before you tonight, unless you would like to modify it. We run through the end of the swim season through February. Councilmember Herrera, you had a question of clarity around what is that two months? We will basically keep the pool open an additional two months. So it'll be open for the school district as well as the public for January and February. And then we'll run into March, and we will then drain the pool and put it in this, with this minimum utilities and maintenance, which we estimate at about forty thousand dollars for the ten months. And it could be less than that, could be more than that, as we get into these, we'll do those. But the utilities for Lions Pool are quite a bit. The alternate number one we're looking at is school districts taking over, so, oh, yes, ma'am.
So my question is about the ten months minimum utilities, maintenance, that's what the pool drained?
Correct.
Is that going to cause any future concern about the pool being drained and the seals drying out? And then maintenance work that has to be done before it's filled again and used again?
Yes, yeah, so if you keep any of these facilities mothballed over a period of time, it'd be like, yeah, coming back to your house after it's been shut down for a long time. That will usually require a, a period of time where the building has to be reconditioned to bring it back up to operating, operating standards.
It's like if you keep your car in the garage all winter, new battery.
So basically, it's forty thousand dollars if it's shut down. That doesn't include startup fees again, and it also doesn't include if, if any damage is done. My question is, how much would it be to keep it minimum utilities and maintenance if the water's left in the pool, so that those things don't happen?
We would have to go and find that information, so, well, well, we kind of know. So, so just baseline operation for the pool is two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars a year. Just to, just to have a building sitting there with water in the pool and.
About twenty thousand a month.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so, so that, that would be the, the cost to do that. And that, that shows up in the cost to school districts. Because what we're saying there is the, it wouldn't be available for public swim or anything, it'll just be the school districts taking over. So they would have to find that, that minimum dollars in their budgets to, to do the swim teams throughout the year.
Thank you.
Yes.
A way to make the pool more efficient, so it's not so, like, is there?
Likely, I, I know they just recently.
Green grants for solar panels on the roof to make the power utilities go down? I mean, I'm throwing out all sorts of crazy.
That's a thought.
Yeah.
Sure. There, there's some, it's just, it's a, it's a big chunk of water. And, and pools, pools are not moneymakers. They're just, so you, you could probably provide some efficiency. We actually just recently upgraded the HVAC system in the building because the moisture, and this is a little bit before my time, so if I mistake, Ken can throw something at my head. But because the moisture was really decaying the building, the structure of the building, so new HVAC system to dry the air out in there. But again, that, that costs money to put that system in and to run it, but then it reduces, you know, the wear and tear on the building. So all those things are trade-off, but it would be, it would be capital costs to, to implement those things to make the pool more, more efficient.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, there's all this CCA money that they're doing. Maybe there's a grant, you can go out and get something.
There's some, I mean, there's been recently just a solar grant that went out to put solar panels on buildings. A lot of that was generated by federal money. That federal money is, is drying up now for those, so. So there is, there could be opportunities, we just don't, we don't have any near term.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So then Lions Pool continued, I'll let you do it. So this would be looking, alternate number two is really minimal operation, keeping the same hours and the same days. So in this case, we limit any of the public swims to fifty swimmers per hour, which limits the number of staff that we have to have there. The fixed costs and utilities and supplies is two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, so that, that stuff's there. This case, you would have total operating hours, you can see the math there, so the fifteen hours a day, five days a week, fifty weeks, you get to a three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar figure. Add that to the two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars of fixed costs. You get a hundred and forty thousand revenue with fee increases. You're still looking at four hundred and seventy thousand dollars in a donation that would make it revenue neutral. Alternate number three, and this was one of the questions regarding how we, can we look at the hours of operation in Lions Pool because it is open fifteen hours a day? So looked at just the ten hours a day, kind of keeping the same math, four days a week and fifty weeks, and you reduce the operating costs significantly. But again, you have that high fixed cost of just having water in a pool and chemicals so it doesn't get yucky and all those things. So the revenues go down, so your gap goes down, three hundred and sixty thousand, but it's still a, a big gap that you would need to create donations, naming rights, things like that.
It's a lot of donations.
Is option three also reducing capacity?
Yeah, so there we're decreasing the, the, well, yes, so you're still limiting the fifty swimmers per hour. So you'd still have the, the limits there, it just reduces the, the open hours.
Right, okay.
So if you cut it to what folks were talking about earlier on a
Just three months.
Eight-month or nine-month open schedule, you're even looking less than alternate three on hours there.
You, you could be, and we could do that math. I think you would still, you would still get some of those fixed costs in there because same sort of thing, I don't know that you could drain the pool for the summer, but, but you're probably spending less in, in natural gas to heat the pool because the temperature is warmer, but you're still going to have some operational issues. You're still going to have chemicals and things like that. So you're still going to have some of those fixed costs, even with, with reducing and saying, okay, we'll shut it for the summer. You're still going to have a fairly big gap in there that you're going to need to close.
Right, but you lose the, you lose about seventy-five thousand in, in operation staffing. If you do your math using your formula.
Yeah.
Drops it from two hundred thousand to one twenty-eight, so.
Yeah, if you're going to close for three months out of the year.
Yeah. Or four months out of the year.
Four months, then you're at thirty-three percent, so yeah, you'd be down around a hundred and thirty thousand, something like that.
Yeah, right around there.
Sorry, we're doing a lot of.
Doing math.
Yeah, doing math in my head quickly, so, yes.
Before you go on, do you, I don't see an update on the school districts because that, that was the rest of the motion, so let me, let me chime in on that really quick. So the three of us are going to be meeting with the superintendents of the schools that participate on December eighteenth. So that is after your last meeting of the year. So I will be providing you an update in January on how that goes.
For the Washington Fruit Center, again, the baseline operations, we'd be shuttering the facility in January and eliminating the programming. We do still have that ongoing cost for utilities, some base utilities, maintenance, some security. General fund contribution would be about thirty, thirty-five thousand. Again, that's an estimate of utilities, maintenance and security. That certainly could get adjusted as we go along in the operating. But we, we do need somebody just in case that building has something that breaks, the sink starts leaking, we gotta have somebody come and repair it. So we want to try to absorb all, recognize all the costs that could come with that.
So it looks like the costs that are listed here are just if we shut it down?
For the baseline. Because that's, that's currently, that's what's in the budget right now, so the.
I know that we are looking at potential RFPs with other providers in the community to take over program or take over facility. But if that doesn't happen, you know, we have the same potential lowered hours, increased fees, those kinds of things for some programming at the Washington Fruit Center. You have to do maintenance, basic maintenance in the building anyway.
Yes, so you, you can, some of the alternates that we looked here is, is bringing in, so we have, there might be some different funding sources based on the area that is served by the Washington Fruit Center. So, so that would be alternate number one, where we look at a lease structure or an operations agreement with a third party. So this would be a third-party, party nonprofit takes over the facility. The utilities and maintenance in some of our initial discussions, they're like, well, that's where we'd need help. Like, we could probably do the programming, but we need funding for the utilities and maintenance. In this case, we think there's a potential for community development block grant funding, which is similar to what we do to, for Henry Bochamp? Yeah. For utilities, supplies and some repairs and maintenance. Naming rights around the Washington Fruit Center are uncertain, but you could look, in this case, you would, this would be a revenue neutral option. Well, because it wouldn't be impacting the general fund because you'd be using, if you can utilize CDBG funding, like we think we can.
With the third-party nonprofit work, I don't know how, Sarah, do you remember when we did this with the Bochamp Center with OIC? Was it an RFP, was it?
That was before my time.
Really?
We've been partnering with OIC at the Henry Bochamp Community Center for a very long time. I think at least since I've been here, so over almost ten years.
And how does the contract, contractual agreement work there?
Sure, so the contract is, we provide the building at no cost, they provide all the programming. Mr. Schaefer in the public works budget has money set aside for maintenance costs. And they also can use some REIT funding for mass, major capital improvements if it's available. And we've generally met with them to talk about those improvements before the year starts. But they're in charge of all the programming and they have full, like, possessory interest in the building itself. And then they can rent out pieces of it to other nonprofit community organizations.
So do you know, I mean, maybe anyone knows, did, did the city go out for an RFP on that process? Or was it, we just work with you, let's get it done?
I don't know, I think, you know, if the council wants to go out for an RFP or an RFQ or an RFI, which is a request for interest, you could see what's out there and, and go from there. There are a lot of different options, so we can bring those back if that's what you want. And we can outline the different options, the pros and cons, and you can choose how you want to move forward.
I think the benefit of a process there is you, as you get later on and you're, if you want to sign an agreement or something like that, you don't have somebody showing up and saying, oh, I would have offered you a better deal. This way you can say, well, you know, we did this process, we have, like, an RFI is probably the best for this. So you identify interested parties and then you work with them on, okay, what kind of deal is going to work here?
It's interesting, I mean, I, I think it would be an interesting, I, I mean, alternate one. I mean, I, I think it's.
It would, it would take some time, right, to do that, so. And then, then alternate number two, which is really what, I believe the mayor was getting at, which is you look at minimal operations, reducing that. You're still probably at an operating cost of about two hundred and fifty K, reducing it. Revenues in, in the Washington Fruit Center are nominal. There are just not a lot of revenues there, especially as we look at, some of them are, you know, some of the revenues that we receive there are grant funding to do a program. And, and so they don't really create operating dollars for the facility. So you'd be looking at about two hundred and fifty K in operating costs and about, that would be what the gap you would need to cover through donations. Then last one is the Harmon Center. And there's really, we just have a couple of options on this. So the baseline, again, you're shuttering the facility, you know, we'll get into what may come. You know, we'll get into what may come from that. But, so you have the ongoing costs. General fund contribution would be about the same as the Washington Fruit Center. So it's that, that 40K for minimum utilities, maintenance, security, pest control. The language is precursor that the primary purpose has to be a senior center for the Harmon Facility. So alternate number one, so this would be reducing some of the operational costs, increasing the fees. In the case, I think trips and tour got mentioned, but trips and tour is basically self-funded, which it's very close to right now. So that is the, the senior trips and tour. Staffing is reduced. Fees are increased. The $50,000 donation that we mentioned that council will be reviewing to accept, which we, we would hope you would accept.
Nope.
As, as you have, you don't, then I mean, that's going to kind of blow the budget out of the water. But the donation is added in. So in this case, you have revenues around 175K. Expenses around 325. You can see the increase and the decrease. And so the additional donations required are 150, except that number is actually 125.
About 125.
About 125, because we had a number in the expenses that we were basically kind of doubling up some of the utility costs.
And that doesn't, oh, yeah, never mind.
Yeah. So that would be additional donations of 125K or, you know, our other, other one-time funding to run it for a year. But that would be a council decision. But to get to revenue neutral, we'd have to identify 125K in additional donations. That is kind of the, those three points. And I think we answered the questions that council had provided to us as well as some of the motions on that. So.
Yep.
Craig, you want to take over from there?
Yeah. So the next, the next one was kind of built for the next discussion, which was the revenue options, which I know are off the table. So just go through that. That was the 10th of a cent sales tax, the utility taxes. And then future potential year options would, basically for the most part, all of those have to do with property tax. But there's the look at a regional fire district, an EMS levy, a parks district or a levy lid lift, which is what was, was tried in November. So those are all things. This is not an exhaustive list. The reason those four that were, their property tax are future years is there's no way to start that, even if it was voted in. We couldn't get that until 2027 anyway. So it's, it's not something that will really impact 2026's budget. So, and this was information on the utility tax. I don't know that we probably need to go through that in detail. So, and this was again, one more discussion about the different items that were on the discussion for, the council had asked us on November 18th to bring forward. Those are, are not there. So the last couple go back to Gary.
Yeah. Well, the updates we actually had earlier. So those were from Randy. So the way we're going to do this little run of the show here is if you had modifications that you wanted us to make, Craig is ready to kind of make the, well, depending on what they are, ability to make those, like if you said, well, let's use one-time funding to back up the potential donations for the Harmon Center as an example. We probably asked for a recess, but a brief recess and Craig would modify the budget real time and come back to you in like five or 10 minutes. So, but that would be, those are council directions. So we kind of told you what baseline is if you want to pass that budget. And I'll leave it up to you.
Are you raising your hand?
I am raising my hand.
Then go ahead.
Okay. I mean, I, I would like to see the Harmon Center stay open. It has been something that has been, that, you know, I have consistently been working with them on. And one of the things that, you know, we met last week, last Wednesday for a few hours, talking about all of the different things and understanding and getting through a lot of this stuff. And there's a lot of things that we still don't know in regards to even just some of the agreements and some of the things with inside the city that are, in my opinion, very important that we figure out. So I would move that the Harmon Center be removed from all budget cut options and remain fully funded in this year's budget. So it gives us time to figure this out. And we can address this again, but it would allow. Yeah.
You, oh, wait, for a second, but I have questions for clarity. So.
So again, the motion I made was I moved that the Harmon Center be removed from all budget cut options and remain fully funded in this year's budget.
One second.
We have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown, a second by Councilman Reed to, Berg, excuse me, Councilman Berg, didn't mean to call you.
Oh, it's all good. I've been called worse.
To remove the restrictions on the Harmon Center for, oh, thank you. That's much better. That the Harmon Center be removed from all budget cuts, budget cut options and remain fully funded in this year's budget.
I would like to amend that. I would move that we also keep the Lions Pool open and the Washington Fruit Center open based on the assumption that they will continue to work on alternative funding sources and pursue that because they said they needed more time. And then if we have to, we can make a decision to close them at a later date. And I think we could comply with the budgetary requirement by doing that, can't we? We can anticipate that these funds are going to be generated as we put these programs together. And then if it doesn't material.
Really long amendment.
Remember. I move that we add
amend.
The Washington, amend the motion to include the Washington Fruit Center and the Lions Pool.
My question is, how are we going to do that?
When we, we don't have it. So we have a motion on the floor. We either get a second or we don't.
If he tells us it can't possibly be done, that's his job. But at this point, that's what I'd like to see.
We have a motion on the floor. We get a second or we don't. Motion dies for lack of a second on the amendment. We're back to the original motion, which is for the Harmon Center.
You can keep that one. I have three copies.
So we had a motion and a second. We're open for discussion.
Okay. And this is just Harmon Center?
Just Harmon. I, I, I would like to bring back too, is I would like to know exactly what this other donation, if there is something like that. I mean, the cost could be a lot less than what we're even looking at at this moment. I, I seem to really, I really believe in Axel and what he is saying. He is, you know, when he is communicating those things, I'm, I'm, I'm bound to believe him on that. And so I, that's part of why I'm making this motion is I don't actually think it's the full 300,000 that is necessary to get us through. But this does buy, there are other options to sustain this long-term. You mentioned the, the RFP process or RFI or different things with the Harmon Center aspect. But there's also other options as well that we can explore, and they're willing to work with us to do those things. And I think that's important to give us time to get those things done.
Thank you. My question is, how much is it to actually fully fund it for this year to keep it open?
So that, that was kind of my question. So I, I had a couple of questions. When you say fully fund, so there was, if you go back to the original 2026 budget, there was a $50,000 reduction to the Harmon Center out of the first $3 million cuts.
I'm not talking about that.
Okay. So that's what I needed to know, number one. Number two, there has been some adjustments to revenue options. So there's been a fee adjustment for increased revenues. And there's also been some additional reductions of a community center assistant and some temporary labor. So are we talking about including all of that? And it really is this $150,000 that we're saying we're, we're willing to fund? So when you say to, to fully fund it, I want to make sure I understand what you're asking.
What did you have in the budget?
So.
It's gone, right?
Yeah. With, without the adjustment to the, to the fees, without the adjustment or using some real estate excise tax for maintenance, and without those two adjustments to expense, it would have been 331,779. So the reduction of expense, increase in revenue has gotten it to the 150,000 approximately.
So that's how much we need to raise?
If, yeah. But I just want to make sure, are you talking about the 150,000 or are you talking about the 331,000?
I'm talking about, that's a good question. Can you show that slide again that has that?
Yeah, it's kind of here. And so what we're saying is, is we've, we've increased the revenue by the 175,000, which includes that $50,000 donation already. And then the 325,000 reduces expenditures by 130, which is 50 of it is the, is the first 3 million. So it's really 80,000. So what we're really saying is, is all of those things will have an impact on the Harmon Center in terms of how it operates. It won't operate the same way if you just add 150,000. If you add the 331,000, it will operate very similar. Or council could say, keep the expenditures in there, which would be about, about another 80,000, 75,000. And so that would be about 225,000, but, but, but continue to increase the revenue that we expected to try to, to bring in. So it would be about 225,000 if you don't cut the expense. It would be the 150,000 if you cut the expense and you raise the revenue.
So the 331 doesn't actually include the donation?
The 331. It does, actually.
It does?
Does include the 50,000?
It does.
Just the 50,000.
Just the 50. Yeah. Not any more than that.
Right. So, but it's not 331. It was 225?
It'd be 225 if you, how do I want to say?
There's like four options you've said here. So.
Yeah. If you don't cut the additional expenses, that's 75,000. And then if you added the 150,000, that would be the 225. But you would still be looking for an additional $100,000 in fees increased from what's being collected in '25.
And we'd still be looking for more donations as well.
To cover the difference, but if you gave the 100 and, or the 225,000, that would, that would balance it for '26.
Which would give you one year opportunity to find a permanent solution. Because remember, we're filling in with one-time money.
Right.
And if we're looking at 225,000, we're looking at about a third of the one-time money that's available, other programs to look at.
So go for the 225. Let's move on.
Sure. I'll do 225.
Okay, I'll second that. Is that the motion?
Uh, yeah. I'll amend it to 225.
So we have a motion to amend the total amount for the Harmon City, Harmon Center functioning to $225,000 by Deputy Mayor Brown and a second by Councilman DCL.
And that keeps it open. Things are rockin'. I want, I want, yes, yes.
You're going to go, have to go out and pass.
We have to vote on it first. You have to get the vote before you can say yes.
Yeah. And I really have, have no objection. My greatest concern is that we have, we have two other significant programs and facilities to look at. And we, you know, we're dipping big into that one-time money. Yes. And we have limited, you know, it's great, we have a great, wonderful giving community, but there's only so many large donors. And everybody's going to be scrambling. So just keep that in mind. Any other comments?
Yeah, that was my only concern. And I didn't fully agree with your motion or amendment, Mr. Lim. But yeah, I want to look at each item as individual as well.
Okay. Thank you.
So we're just on the amendment?
If there, yeah, if, yeah. So the question is, are we going to add the amendment to the motion? Okay? All of those in favor, please say aye. Raise your hand, aye.
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 Okay. That's seven one, that's unanimous. So we have an amended motion now. And the amended motion is to.
Seven oh or seven one?
Seven oh.
Okay.
Yeah. Seven nothing.
Okay.
So the amended motion now is to, to apply $225,000 of the one-time money to keep the Harmon Facility open for this year, for 2026. Is that correct?
And I second that.
Yep.
And you seconded that. Okay. Yeah, that was the original. So, all right.
Reed did too.
And yeah, one was the amendment, the other one was the motion. So we're, we're good to move forward. All right. Again, I'm just going to ask, or raise your hands, all of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. It's seven zero and the motion passes. Thank you, council. We're partway there. All right. We, discussion is open for council.
Okay. We have two other things.
Yes, we do.
The Lions is going for two months.
Yeah, it's open for a little while longer. Gives us a little more time. I, I would like to hear back from the school districts on, on that aspect before we kind of make any more.
When are you guys going to talk to them?
December 18th. I'll meet with Craig and Gary and the superintendents.
We have to vote on the issue before we will know the results. That's what you're saying, right?
So the motion, what could be, the motion could be simply to direct staff to continue until January anyway, seeking a resolution to Lions Pool. And then we would take further in, in January.
Or do we just adopt the budget?
Oh, you made it. I thought you were saying it could be a motion.
Well, it could be. Yeah. So I usually don't, but I am making a motion that we direct staff to continue through the conversation with the school district in the first part of the year to continue to find more clarity on the situation in the pool. And we will readdress that as a council in January. Okay. And I have a second on that. So mayor made the motion. A councilman DCL seconded.
Question is, does that comply with the state law if we wait until January to approve it?
Yes. You, you already have funding in the current budget through February.
Okay.
Okay.
That was my question.
Thank you. Thank you for asking that. That clarifies any other discussion?
I don't know if they heard you back there, if you have funding for February.
Yes, we do have funding through February. Please understand that. So that gives us time in January to look at the situation and make other changes that we need to make. So. For Lions Pool. For Lions Pool.
We want clapping. No, I'm just kidding.
We're going to close the Washington Fruit Center at the end of the year.
Well, we not got there yet, Rick.
Okay. All right. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, council. That brings us to the Washington Fruit Center.
How, how long is a process to do your alternate one plan of going out for an RFI? Is that what you said? How long does that take? Is that?
We could prepare it to go out. So it's, it could go out in January. You'd probably want to give 30 plus dates for people to respond. Then you would have parties that you would want to talk and negotiate with. Guessing. I, I would say you're probably looking at a six-month process to get something back to council. Because, and actually because part of it is we have to come back with council and check in, right? So, so I would think that's about where you're at.
What would it cost if we just kept the, the after-school program going for a while?
Ken, Ken is right here.
Oh, Ken is right here.
Welcome, Mr. Wilkinson. Hopefully you can give us some answers.
So just real quick numbers, that's some staff, about 10 staff. And I think it's probably four days a week. I'm going to guess 40, 50,000. I'm sorry, but I don't have those numbers in front of me. But we can definitely get that to you. So that's just the beyond the bell and the afternoon. 50 kids is what our maximum is. Kim, I don't know if you can give me anything. Kim Lopez this year, she's our rec program supervisor. So that is 40-some weeks, 38 weeks a year. And then five days a week from three to six.
Is that the, does that include the karate?
No. The karate is, is, doesn't, there's no cost to that for people to participate. And there's no, there's no fee that's charged for that class.
Is there an instructor fee?
There is not. We do have to have a building supervisor, someone in the building, making sure that everything is working and then locking up and turning on the alarm. So that's really the only expense that we have, other than of course, lights and things like that. So it is minimal.
So we have, did we get a figure on just? So, we have, did we get a figure on just maintenance, general maintenance?
Yeah.
We did.
Okay. I just messed up.
Fifteen thousand plus the twenty thousand.
Karate people be able to keep going, is that what you're saying?
We would have to have a building supervisor in the building for those, that time when they are there. I believe we could do that with a temporary employee.
So, what hours are those?
Yeah. So, can you give us a, a figure, kind of a, including, if it included the karate and the, the beyond the bell? I'm, I'm sure there's a program, we use them at ten people, and our program for fifty children seems like a great deal to me, but, I used to do a lot of program with a lot of years ago, so I understand that.
They, they work part-time, so they all don't work every day.
Okay.
So...
Okay, that, that's clarity, thank you. So...
Karate is during the after-school time.
It's during the after-school time.
Okay.
Oh.
So you already have a supervisor there, okay, so let's just focus on that, that same period of time, Mr. Herr.
Okay, so, from the reserves, twenty-twenty-six, seventy, seven hundred eighty-one thousand, and then we just gave the Harmon Center two hundred and twenty-five thousand, so leaves us around five hundred fifty-five thousand, correct? So we have five hundred fifty from the reserve, and we already just gave the Harmon Center to, this is, the reserve, for six months, that...
So we could, we could use some for...
And it's not cutting into the twelve percent, this is excess reserve.
This is one-time money, reserve money that is here for this year, right?
Yeah, the reserve.
And you said it's fifty, fifty grand for the school year?
It's fifty kids.
Roughly?
It's, yeah.
I mean, just ballpark.
I'm gonna say at least that, again, not having those numbers in front of me, and I know the numbers that Gary and Craig shared, those, those numbers that we showed was just bare minimum, not running that program, that would be eliminated, the beyond the bell program would be eliminated, we would look for the partners to do things within the building, so that would be on top of that two hundred and fifty that's already there. So we have a full-time staff member and some temporary employees to run those programs.
So it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus the running of the program?
Plus.
Per year?
Per year.
Or a whole year?
Yes.
So, was there a motion on that, or was it just discussion?
No, we're talking about...
So the possibility would be, if we're, if we're looking at, we have two potential partners in some way that we're talking to already, that if we could do a half a year, six months, to get us through the school year, to provide funding for that, so that would give us opportunities so we can connect with a community partner or sponsors for the center and program? Is a possibility?
So until June.
Through, through June. Which would be how much?
Total, for every...
About half, about half of that.
Hundred fifty thousand?
Hundred and twenty-five?
Hundred fifty. So, a hundred, a hundred and fif, one twenty-five kind of a base, I would go one fifty would do that. I mean, we'll build the actual expenditures around what you're instructing us to do, but if your motion was one fifty, that would be, probably give us enough to do that.
Is that your motion?
Somebody else can make the motion if they'd like, I was just making suggestions.
And then, are you doing math?
So the two hundred and fifty for the operating cost, plus the fifty for the after-school, and he said half a year.
So one fifty. So we'd be down around four hundred then?
Oh, wait. Oh, yeah, yes.
Two twenty-five is three seventy-five minus...
Greg, you're, you're the math guy, come on now.
Budget dust.
Parks and Rec guys don't do math in their head. It's not possible.
I can ask him.
You can open the restrooms in the parks.
So I, I have a question for Craig.
Yes.
Be four hundred and six thousand left.
He's doing math over there. Craig, if, if they put that money in the budget for a period of time, and during that time we do the RFI and we come up with a partner, that, any sort of, the rest of the year could be adjusted?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, so we don't need to worry about when or how long if, if we find a partner?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, I'd make that motion.
I second.
Or a hundred and fifty.
Second.
Okay, so, so I'm trying to, okay, so what I'm hearing is a motion from Deputy Mayor Brown to?
To fund...
Six hundred and fifty thousand?
Fruit Center for six months for a hundred and fifty thousand.
Including the beyond the bell.
Including the beyond the bell and the karate. And I would like to join the karate.
So we have a motion by Deputy Mayor Brown, and a second by Councilman DCL, to fund the Washington Fruit Center for six months for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that would include the beyond the bell and the karate program.
Yes.
Is that correct? Any discussion of the motion?
We also have the lunch program that doesn't cost the city anything, if we had people in the building, that could operate as well.
Oh, the senior lunch program?
For people.
Yes.
Is there already people in the building?
Yes, we will have staff in the building to be able to operate that.
Would also include our, our lunch program then for seniors.
Some of those free programs.
All right, thank you. So as long as people in the building and the, and the programs are zero, in, income zero expense, then we're good.
It'll be, it'll be Kim Lopez, our rec program supervisor, and probably one temporary employee.
Okay, all right.
Sounds great.
Do we need to amend the motion, or do we just go?
No, no, it's just gonna be included, there's...
Not gonna be.
It's already in there.
Very good, very good.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, seven zero. Thank you, council, you have direction there.
Clock's ticking.
All right, I do have something to bring up, and so, Mr. Warren, I want to ask you this, because it is a budgeting night, and we're talking about budgeting items, the council has already removed the AWC membership expense from the general fund. My understanding is that staff have been evaluating, analyzing with AWC a medical insurance program to see if they can save money, and want to know if we have an update on that. Any updates on that?
Yeah, I can, so, so a little bit of information, and I don't, I don't have a lot, but I know that, since I've been at the city, there has been a desire to look at how we do our medical insurance for our employees. Right now, the city is self-insured, and I know that that's something that, from time to time, you have to look at. We know that claims have gone up, and that, that means that we have to continue to put more money in, and the other side of it is really just the, the bottom line, the risk. Being self-insured, you take that risk, you get the benefits if you, if you don't spend the money, because, you know, your, your employees are healthy, but if you have some claims that go against it, we know that two of the bigger programs, if you want to go self, or if you want to go fully funded, rely one on the, the state PEB program, the other one is through the AWC program. And that is one that I know that we have, we've looked at, and I believe there's been some requests for information. Ultimately, it likely can't be something that can be done, we just did open enrollment in November, so that, that's, that time's passed, but it's something that we definitely want to hopefully keep open for us, to have access to. Otherwise, really, the big, the big ability for us to look at is either the PEB, or to go out to the open market, and it's, it's not unheard of for a city, but usually the PEB or AWC is better, overall.
So, one of the things I know is that there are two other cities, I'm looking, Ellensburg and Vancouver, who have both recently transferred to AWC for insurance, and Ellensburg saved two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's just speculation, but they're a smaller city than we are. The other thing is that we, the city staff already heavily uses AWC resources. Our HR department, for example, uses them for salary surveys and many things like that, and also for staff trainings, which brings me to the conference we have here every year that AWC brings in, which brings in approximately just under four hundred thousand dollars annually into our businesses, our hotels, our restaurants, the convention center, and I want you to consider this, because we keep saying we want to be a business-friendly city, and if we remove four hundred thousand dollars of the income, you know, we could damage that reputation, that's my thinking, anyway.
And we also need the AWC, or someone to do the council, you know, bring in the new council people.
Right, the training, it would be more expensive if we're not members, we'd have to pay a higher fee for it than we do now. So there's, you know, two of us have been involved on advisory boards, Rick has been on the large city advisory board, and I've served on that board, I recently came off and I started serving on the legislative priorities board. The benefit to us as an east-side city is that we get more east-side influence and voice onto those committees, and it's been helpful this year on the, on the legislative priorities to have a couple really strong east-side voices in there, so I just want to say that. So, for that reason, I am gonna make a motion to direct staff to add AWC back to the budget, but allocating the cost to all city funds.
A second.
So further discussion would be looking at this, I think it would be, it takes it, it's already been taken out of the council portion of the budget, but it would still be in the overall general fund, and it would cost us about twenty-five thousand dollars of the reserve money to do the membership for the next year, to see what, what we can do to get the ongoing benefit for our business community of the conference coming in this next year, and to help our staff, and to see if we can get a better insurance rate.
Now, can we, can we, the staff that do the trainings, can those be taken out of their budgets?
Yeah, that's what they're gonna distribute around different departments' budgets.
So we have more money than we thought we did.
No, so we don't.
So I, I would speak against the motion, for the simple sake that, you know, the four hundred thousand dollar number is, is kind of blown out of proportion when it comes to the amount of actual tax revenue that is seen from four hundred thousand, we're not seeing four hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue, we're seeing one percent in a sales tax, maybe some in a, so let's talk about lodging tax and those other things, you're talking about three percent, maybe five percent at most, coming in off of that four hundred thousand, you're, it's barely, if anything, not even covering the membership cost. So, hold on, I'm speaking. And, and I would say is that, right now, we have police officers, firefighters, we have stations that are getting closed, we have things that are happening, and we're trying to keep a membership for the what-if and maybes and possibles that we have still no information on. And so, in my opinion, that is why I'm saying no, because there are other priorities, much like the things that we've already funded tonight, that are way more important, in my opinion, than a membership, that in the last four years has not actually done anything from a legislative priority standpoint of passing anything of substantial.
I'd like to, to respond to that by saying, you know, it isn't just the three percent or one percent sales tax, it's the money that comes into those businesses, that supports their ongoing operation, money coming in for hotel rooms, money coming in for meals, money coming in for things like that, they're actually direct, direct income, not just sales tax money to the city, but direct income to businesses in the city, and that is what I think is the most important piece of that. So it's like telling the business community, well, that's not important that we do that, and I think that it is, we want to be a business-friendly city.
I also think it's important...
I'm still speaking, thank you. I, I also think that one of the, one of the constant pressures of AWC for the legislature is local control, and I've been able to help reinforce that on the committees I've been on. It's very important that we as cities remain as much local control of our funding and other things as we can, we need the, you know, the strong voices of east-side cities in there with the west-side as well. So, and again, I just, you know, so we do have, we do have needs for the police, for our public safety, and it's interesting to me that we took that off the ballot tonight, to not even discuss it, and, and yet you don't want to discuss twenty-five thousand...
No, let's be clear, point of order, let's be clear, we took off talking about taxes after the voters said no to taxes, that's what we took off.
That's tax?
No.
So, yeah, we didn't talk about the, the public safety tax.
One tenth, one percent.
We didn't talk about that tonight because it's taken off the budget, so let's be clear about that as well.
We talked, we, we took off the budget items, on the agenda tonight was that the aspects that were taken off had everything to do with more taxes. That is what we took off.
The vote of the voters was not for more taxes, it was specifically on a levy lift and not all taxes.
It was also not a vote to spend more money.
None of this is a vote to spend more money, but we're doing it.
I'm just, I'm just saying, like...
The sales tax is based on consumer spending.
Yeah, consumer spending.
Which is already down.
I just wanted to make a comment, comment earlier.
Go ahead, Councilman DCL?
I'm good.
Oh, you're good, okay, any other comments?
Rick had a comment.
Speak for yourself.
I would, Rick, what do you think, because you were on the board too, right? Of AWC?
Well, the thing that really bothers me is, the membership is like eighty thousand dollars, it's a ton of money, and would I rather have a policeman or an AWC membership? That's not even a debate, I'd rather have another policeman. AWC is, you know, it's a very good social atmosphere you get, but I don't know how much they affect the legislature completely, I got over to the legislature every year, and, and the issues that are important to Yakima are not given a whole lot of weight over in Olympia, it's, it's an ongoing challenge, and, and I don't see AWC forwarding that a whole lot. I mean, if we weren't in a budget crunch, it's, yeah, let's do it till we do, you take every possible venue to have an influence, but my, you know, as far as our ability to have an influence, AWC is every city in the state, and we're just one of, what is it, a thousand, eight hundred cities, something like that, so...
But we are a city that can have a strong voice, but my response to that, and I appreciate that, Councilman Glenn, is that that seventy-three thousand dollars is, is not money that's gonna go toward the operation of the police department, it's a different pool of money that that would come from, it's not affecting the general fund as if we were paying the full membership, just twenty-five thousand dollars worth. You're not gonna hire a police officer for that, so...
Just to provide some context, what time of year does that conference occur?
It is in May, I believe, May of each year.
How many days?
Pardon me, it's about four days, three, four days.
Four days.
Yeah.
You said they bring in about five hundred people.
It, it comes to between three hundred and eighty and four hundred thousand dollars income is what they're talking about, and they would give us a guarantee for the next three years moving forward, that we're talking about over the next three years.
And I believe they were also talking about having Yakima do their actual regional...
Right, to do an extra conference for their actual annual regional meetings.
Please speak on the mic.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, anyway, so, I understand the hesitancy of some council persons, but I think this is a positive move for the council to support city staff, and to support our businesses with income coming into the city. Any other discussion? Councilman Brown?
I would like to say, can you tangibly actually see that this is actually helping business?
Well, I, we did get a letter from Mr. Cooper from the...
Yeah, I know, but when I've asked for actual documentation of showing how this actually impacts business, I have yet to receive proof and evidence of that. It's real easy to say big statistics, and this is what happens, and we have all of these things, but when push comes to shove, I mean, five hundred people, I've had events turned down at the convention center, you can talk to Leo, there's been events turned down at the convention center that have brought in twenty-five hundred people, two thousand people, you want to talk about revenue, these things have brought in, could brought, bring in five times more revenue with the amount of people that have been turned down at the convention center, for whatever reason.
We don't know, I'd like to hear the reason behind that, then.
Every convention brings in...
Every convention brings in...
And they've been turned down, and said they will not work with us again, so I say that because a lot of this aspect, I go, okay, do you have proof? You can put numbers on a piece of paper real easily, I still have not seen the benefit on the insurance side, I've asked for that in private to the city manager, if, if this is actually a thing that benefits, prove it.
Well, that, this is going to give us an opportunity to prove it, if you remove it, we'll have no opportunity to prove that saving.
Well, we've had it all year.
And I, I also don't think that we can discount, say, oh, ask our merchants to show us dollar for dollar, you know, what they received in hotel room payments, what they received in meal payments, what they think that's kind of an unreal expectation. Anyway, any other comments? Okay, all of those who are in favor of moving forward with AWC for the next year, please indicate with saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. And all those opposed? Five to two, thank you, council. Any other discussion on budget matters tonight?
I have a question about, is this the time where I can propose an amendment, or do I need to wait for 9 F?
Amendment to what?
Amendment to what?
It's about Station 92.
Um, there, the only thing about Station 92 is we have the recommendation-
Right.
Which is unless, unless we manage to come up with the money through some source of income, whatever source you want to identify, right? Until that happens, there is no funding to, to, to make that adjustment in the fire department. And that adjustment may be Station 92, may be something else, the decision will be made by the chief and the staff unions in the fire department, not by council.
Right, right, I just, I guess my thought process here is, I would like to seek an alternative instead of just outright closing Station 92, if city manager, chief, and Craig-
We can, as a council, make our wishes known, but that's beyond our scope of authority.
But could I make a motion to have them work on that?
Absolutely.
Okay, then I, I'll go ahead and do that right now. I would move that Station 92 remain open, and that the city manager require the fire chief and the financial director to identify and implement $1.8 million in operational reductions within the budget, without using any fire station closures, including the use of extraordinary measures to achieve the required savings, that the budget be adopted with these adjustments, and that the city manager report back to us in January with the changes.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Berg, who I don't think fully understood what I said earlier, to direct this, direct the staff to Station 92 remain open, the city manager require, require the fire chief and financial director to identify and implement $1.8 million in operational reductions with this budget, without using any station closures, including the use of extraordinary measures to achieve the required savings, that the budget be adopted with these adjustments, and that the city manager report back to the city council in January with the changes that need to be made. Did we have a second on that? Which one of you?
Matt.
Thank you. So we have a second by Councilman, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Brown. Any discussion?
Is this just to put it on the future agenda, or?
I would like Vicky and Craig and Chief Markham, instead of closing a fire station to reduce operation, operational reductions, because I've heard loud and clear tonight in our email, the community is very concerned about closing Station 92, so I'd like to propose that alternate option there.
I think all the time there is the argument that that fire station is still useful, and still has a need, and is still in good operating condition, and keeping it operational even if we have minimal staff is better than closing it altogether.
But I think they have to have so many people at the station at the same time.
They, they know the parameters, they can figure it out and let us know if it's possible.
Is Chief Markham here?
Can I, can I say something?
In a minute.
Good evening, Mayor, council members.
Good evening.
So, you know, the request that you're asking me to come up with is probably going to take some time, because as I've illustrated many times, the only other expenses, you know, the 10% is what remains to operate all the stations, and the balance is in our salaries and benefits, so. We can look at it, I don't know where the money's going to come from.
That was my question.
But, you know, reduction in the fire service, number of companies in operation, is going to affect the city overall. There have been people that I've talked to, firsthand knowledge, that actually were going to have their insurance canceled because they lived in a wildland urban interface area, which is Station 92's area. And they got it resolved, but I think it was because there was a mistake, and they actually had their neighbor's address instead of their address, it was just across the road. But those things are, you know, a very strong potential of insurance increases, and so it's going to, we'll take a look at it, but I don't know where I'm going to come up with $1.8 million. I mean, I don't, I mean, my salary's not worth that much, so even if we went with one less fire chief, you're not going to come up with 1.8, you know, $1.8 million, so, but.
Just give it your best shot, is what I guess we're saying, huh?
Deputy Mayor Brown?
So, five years, four years, this has been brought up as always to close Station 92, there's been no, there's been no intent to actually figure out another solution other than cutting $1.8 million out of Station 92. I have brought this forward many times of, why is this the only solution? The answer has been, I don't know. And I'm going, well, four years later, we're still looking at the only solution to solving a $2 million issue in that budget is to close a fire station in, at Station 92. Now, I, I, I mean, I've, I have had, my phone has blown up from the amount of other fire chiefs across this state and in this county that have told me there are other ways to do this. So, that is why I'm supporting Councilman Berg's motion on this aspect, because it has been a frustration of mine, and as council, if this is the only proposal, over and over and over again, is to close Station 92.
So, so you have asked us to reach out to all of our partners that surround the city of Yakima, all the fire agencies that would be interested in creating a regional fire authority, and their answer has been no, they don't want to partner with us. The last time I did that, I got it in writing from them to, you know, just to illustrate that that's what their desires were, not just a voice, but an actual commitment, and we're just writing, you know, illustrating that. We have brought some opportunities, but haven't given the ability to move forward, we brought the, the potential of, let us run our own EMS levy. I did say that was kind of selfish, it doesn't, you know, solve the city's overall general fund deficit, but it solves the fire department's budget for, you know, a time, until the counties have to reset the EMS levy. That was an option, but you're not in support of any type of revenue increases. So, now we're just faced with, how are we going to cut the fire department's budget? That's where we're, where we're at today, it's all about cuts, we haven't been, the regional fire authority doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be cheaper either. There may be some increases to, if a fire benefit charge is required to have a solvent fire department budget. Those have to go in front of the voters, and if it's a slight property tax increase, then it's a tax increase. We're not in favor of tax increases.
But, but you're, you're giving a service that people need to realize that they need and they have to pay for. That's what taxes are for.
It has cost, yes. Fuel's gone up, it is, it is expensive.
Well, if it isn't possible, it isn't possible, and you can determine that better than we can, so.
But I will work with the finance director and the city manager, and we will come up with the results of that.
I honestly don't think, because, Chief, you are correct, in that, Deputy Mayor Brown, you're correct, we've had this conversation for four years, you are correct, Chief, in that there's been an alternative offered, and it's not been acted on by the council, and now the council basically is saying, we don't want to talk about taxes, majority of council, which would let, let the EFS-
EMS?
Yeah, thank you, EMS, go as well. So we're in a place where we're not really looking at more revenue, we're looking at, this is the revenue we have, and how are we going to operate within that, and so I want to respect yours and your department's ability to determine what is going to be the most effective way to do that.
Yeah, that, the size of our department will actually go back to the size it was in 1979, where we operated with a city that was much smaller, and that's the history behind it, and so, that would be the results.
Any others discussion, my council? All right, then we have a motion on the floor with a second, we need to vote on the motion. All of those in favor of directing staff to Barkwood Chief on something besides the closing of Station 92, please raise your hand. All of those opposed? Right, five to two, then the staff has their direction from council, thank you. Is there anything else?
On budget or another business?
We do have item 9 F?
Yes, we do. Item 9 F-
I guess we have to do that.
Item 9 F is the ordinance to adopt the 2026 mid, mid biennial budget. Again, Mr. Warner and Mr. Ballou are presenting to council.
Yes, so, thank you, council. With all of the decisions that the council made tonight, I've been able to plug them into an Excel spreadsheet, so we have some updated numbers for you.
You're amazing, thank you.
I apologize, because it is Excel, it makes it a lot harder to see and read, and I apologize, but I'll kind of go through that. In your packet, you had a three-page summary that had the detail about each of the funds, because as we've talked tonight, we've only talked really about the general fund and parks, and how much money the general fund gives to parks. All of the other funds out there have their own fun, revenue funds that they're, and, and then they spend that money, and there's a sizable amount of those, those types of things out there, including reserves for each of those funds. So ultimately, what I've able, been able to do is I've added the two council motions to be able, that were approved, to be able to add funding for Harmon Center for the entire year for 2026, and also for six months for the Washington Fruit Center, Community Center. So, doing that, it changes the, the top number up here that's in green, this is the general fund change. So it basically means that the general fund's expenditures are going to go up.
Mike, I'm wondering if you can enlarge that, please?
Yeah.
From your side.
I probably can.
Oh, can you, okay, somebody needs to.
I think he's doing it.
Can Mike do it?
Yeah. A little more, okay, there we go, thank you.
It's moving.
So this would change the general fund's expenditures up, $225,000 for Harmon Center, $150,000 for Washington Fruit Center. That would then make the total expenditures $88,779,842. It would also then reduce the ending fund balance to $11,015,083, which is still under, or, or we're still within that 12% minimum reserve requirement that, that is policy by council. And then we will add, over here in the Parks Department, they will get an additional $225,000 for Harmon Center, $150,000 for Washington Fruit Center, and then they will spend same, the same. So those, those changes to the Park and Rec Department have been made. So when you get to the bottom down here, and again, I told you there's a lot of funds, the bottom line is, is the mended budget that we would ask you to, to consider tonight would be a total revenue budget of $301,957,100, and a total expenditure budget of $317,972,839.
I moved to adopt the mid biennial budget. Do you want to discuss it?
What did you say?
What did you say?
He moved to adopt it, the budget.
We have to, we have to adopt it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I moved to adopt it. Nobody else wants to, okay.
I'll second, I guess, yeah.
Okay.
Get it going.
So we have a motion by, Councilman Glenn, and a second by Councilman Berg to adopt the 2026 mid biennial budget as just presented by, with adjustments just presented by Mr. Warner.
We've worked for months and months and months to get here, I'm ready to be there.
Any further discussion?
I think, I don't think we're done.
I don't either.
But I think we're, we have to keep moving, so.
We will have to open this and address it during the next year regardless, but this satisfies the state law, we're compliant with the state law, and we can move on.
I think so, and I, I'll make some closing comments at the end, I'm not going to do it right now, but. So we have a motion on the floor, we have a first and a second, any other discussion on the motion? Yes, would you read the ordinance then, please, thank you.
This is an ordinance adopting the modification of the 2025 through 2026 biennial budget to fiscal year 2026, setting forth the estimated revenues and appropriations and establishing an effective date. Fires?
Yes.
D C O?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
Herrera?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Berg?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes 7-0, and the ordinance is, is passed, thank you, council. Is there any other business?
I have a motion I'd like to make.
Go ahead.
I move that the city prepare a resolution listing the legislative issues that we would like to be addressed in the 2026 legislature to send over to Olympia and to our legislators. In other words, we need to lay out what are the things that we are concerned about, that we would like the legislature to address.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion.
Good luck reading.
If you can read it, you get a-
Chicken scratch, chicken scratch, okay, we have a motion by Councilman Glenn, and a second by Councilman Berg, that the city prepare a resolution listing legislative issues that we would like to address in the 2026 legislative year.
Yes.
How did you reading that?
That's good.
That was it.
And my, my intention was that next week, we could bring whatever issues that we think need to be addressed and share all of our ideas and put a rough draft together, and then have staff make it formal or whatever, and then we can send it to our legislators and send it to Olympia to be considered.
I think that, you know, every year we make a legislative priorities list, and we submit that as a city, by simple vote. I think doing it by resolution is a little more authoritative with our legislature, that we as a city are sincere about our efforts and wanting to see some changes. I think it just carries more weight to do it that way, and I would agree to the motion.
I also think it, maybe they'll listen.
I wouldn't bet my life on it, you got to try.
So, we need to bring back a couple things next week, is that what you're asking us?
The issues that you are concerned about, that you think need to be addressed in the legislature. I've got about four that I'm thinking of, but I don't want to be the sole input, I want everybody to have-
Well, these would be issues that directly affect the municipality, the functioning of the city.
Correct.
Any other discussion?
I was just, for clarification, are you looking to pass a resolution next week?
Yes, well, we're to, to, a vote, to work on a resolution.
Work on one, okay.
Yeah.
We, we did have Craig on the spot be able to update the budget, but, you know, being able to write a resolution at the same time-
Ryan did it one time, right?
No, it's to call for-
We know you're special, we want it yesterday.
Writing the resolution, so we as a council will put a resolution together. At our next meeting, we'll talk about those ideas. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0, thank you, council. Anything else?
Yeah, a few things, one is, this is, this is an extremely passionate type of thing to go through as a community, and it's tough, it's been tough on this council, it's been tough on the community, it's been tough on just about everyone that is trying to figure out how to navigate all of these issues. I want to say that, you know, even though we might disagree at times, I'm thankful to be able to sit here with you guys and be able to hash these things out. And, you know, over the, you know, this last election season aspect, you know, the levy, there was seven districts, we have seven districts, five of the seven said no to the levy. Your district and your district were the only ones that said yes, yours barely-
Thank you, District 3.
Yeah, yours barely, and his by a lot, said yes, and it's, it's just a interesting thing that they said no. Some districts said heavily no, which was your district, and anyways, I, I say all that because I think somehow in this community, the thing that I have continuously seen is the generosity of the community, people show up out of nowhere to do these things. But somehow, we have got to, as a government, figure out the, the concepts of bringing the community more into this discussion. community more into this discussion, even more so, because there's so many of them that have still felt like they have not had the opportunity. And that's frustrating from a council who's really tried to be so forthright in all of this process. You know, I asked the Harmon Center at the meeting last week was, what more could we have done to actually, you know, engage more people? And they didn't really have that answer. And they didn't really, I think, think through all of the different aspects, but I, I will just say like, it, there's a new council coming in January, there's, there's always going to be challenges as we do these things. These things aren't necessarily permanent as well. We can work through these issues and figure out the, the future of our, of our city. So I just want to say thank you to this council and the staff and folks that this isn't the, this isn't what any person necessarily wanted to sign up for, to deal with this. I really wish, you know, 10, 15 years ago, councils would have spent as much time as we have spent to try to solve this issue because we probably wouldn't have been in this issue and, but we're here. And so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, and I would add that on top of that, that we have to find a way to get people to vote.
Yep.
That, that the amount of people who voted didn't even represent the city, really. I mean, when you think about how many registered voters we have and how many of them didn't vote, so.
Well, and what is crazy about that is.
We need another opportunity for someone to do that.
Okay.
Thank you. Did you have anything else to say?
No.
Okay. Anybody else?
I think that it really speaks well of the number of people who've shown up the last month to, to comment on the things that are going on. I can remember when I first started coming to these meetings and there was just a handful of people and they were mostly all city staff, so it has been kind of exciting to come and have a lot of people show up who want to weigh in on these issues. And, and to me, that speaks well of our city government, that people are starting to notice and to pay attention. And I hope to realize that when you weigh in, it does make a difference. We wouldn't have renewed the Harmon Center if the public hadn't come and spoken up. We wouldn't have extended the Lions Pool if the public hadn't come and spoken up. And I'm not ready to give up on those issues yet. I hope as a city, we can figure out a way before we actually get to these closures to prevent it from happening because I agree that having these amenities are valuable for the community. Having a good fire department is valuable, having a good police department is valuable. And one of the things that really frustrates me is that I see Olympia making laws and things that affect our policing in a negative way, make it more difficult to get drug dealers off the streets and, you know, we just got to keep fighting. And so thank you for coming and fighting for the things that you did the last couple of months.
So I'm going to start by recognizing also that not everybody on council agrees all the time, but that's part of the benefit of having a representative from each district. And each of us, we represent our district, but we also represent the city as a whole. And I think that that's a perspective sometime that, that may get a little skewed with our opinions about things. But I am grateful for the work the council has done. I'm certainly grateful for the staff. I'm grateful for the people who have come out to express to us their concern about the reduction in city services because the $9 million in deficits we're looking at, they're, they're not just cuts, they're reduction in services, the reduction of personnel, you know, there, so there's going to be less services for people to receive and less personnel to accomplish those things that people have come to expect. So that's a little bit of a dichotomy there. One of the things that bothers me really in all of this, and I have absolutely loved having everyone from the Harmon Center and the Washington Fruit Center, the Lions Pool come in and express to us their desires and, and their strong desire to have those ongoing really necessary quality of life issues met for, you know, for their personal needs and needs of children, needs of the community. What I haven't heard and just distresses me a great deal is a lot of support for, for maintaining services in our police department and fire department. Public safety is one of the largest responsibilities of any city. And, and so we've had opportunity to talk about those things. We even had opportunity tonight, and that, that opportunity was, was put down by council to even discuss future opportunities for the police department or the fire department. So it distresses me in a community as large as we are with the issues that we have, that we don't have the advocates here for the police department and for the fire department. You know, people in the community saying, hey, you know, we, we already heard from Chief, we know what's going to happen with the police department, with the loss of, of services, is that some of the lower level services that people complain about the most, animal control, parking, trespassing, shoplifting, homeless loitering, all of those things that we hear about the most from people are going to be the first ones dropped off because they're not going to be the priority calls. Our priority calls are going to be our violent crime issues and other things like that. So it, you know, distresses me in the lack of consideration for that in terms of what we, you know, what we heard generally in the levy, but also even in, you know, council discussion. I will say this, it, it was close in the levy. It was like 49% for the levy, 52% against it. Is that the voice of the people? We have to look at that and go, yes, that's what the vote was. But when I look at 49% of the people saying, we, we are concerned, we need to do something, we can't just ignore that. You know, it's, it's, so it's, to me, it's not a mandate. I'm not asking for an additional tax, I'm not doing that right now, I'm just expressing my frustration over the whole process for, for it to happen that way. And, but here's, here's the good news to me with the 49%, is that people are waking up. You know, I think people have been in honestly a fog, so to speak, about really what's happening in city government and how that works. And we've been the council that have been brought it forward to say, this is what it is, we're being as transparent as we can be, and this is what we need help in resolving. We've been the council that's done that. And so we're catching a lot of flak for that, indeed we are, but I take pride in the fact that we've done that, that we've been really honest and transparent with the community. And I am greatly encouraged that, that the community is in, in some part, 49% beginning really to wake up and that people are here saying, what does this mean? And how is it going to affect me? And this is what I'm asking the city to do. We're hearing a lot of that, and that is great. That is really great because it's telling me that people are listening and they're concerned. And we need, as a council, we spent a year, 12 months educating our community, and still it was amazing to be the number of people that I had no idea. So I'm hoping that people will no longer say, I have no idea, but will engage in the process of attending city council, listening to city council, contacting your city council members, and will be figuring out, helping us to determine as a council, because we're representing you, what are going to be the best things for the, for the city as a whole and, and addressing those issues, you know, head on. And so this has been, it has, I'll admit that Mr. Brown says this true, Deputy Mayor Brown is that this has been a hard process. It's been hard for staff, we've put a lot of demands on staff, and we're looking at making cuts to staff. It's been hard for the council certainly because we all, we've been having conversations not only with people in our district, but people all around the city, different groups of people coming at us one way or another, and we are in the position of making those decisions, so it's not easy. And I am, I am very grateful to city staff, I am very grateful to my council members for being here and doing the hard work because it has been hard work. Grateful that people in the city are starting to go, you know what, we need to be more engaged, we need to have more positive ways to bring solution. And I see that, people coming forward and offering solutions, and honestly, that's what we need. We, we don't want to determine everything for you, we don't want to demand everything from you. We want to hear from you as a city, what you want from us, and then how can you help us implement that? Because it really is a community-wide effort, it's not just the staff. You know, it's not just the police department, it's not just the Harmon Center, it's not any of those things, just it's the city as a whole. How do we elevate the thinking of our city about how we as a city together approach problem solving and solution orientation? We have great opportunity in this community. I have, for the 47, eight years that I have been here, one of the things that I know is that Yakima is the most generous city I have ever lived in without, without any reservation. And I've lived all over California, and I've lived here in Yakima now for a long time. It is the most generous city I have ever lived in. I look at the number of nonprofits and the number of gifts and the number of people that serve as volunteers in our community that carry things out, and it just amazes me. So I believe we have great potential, great potential to move forward, to move past what we're going through right now. I'm also going to say this just as a personal statement. So people who know me, maybe have heard me say this, who know me well, know the truth of it. You know, I have a very strong belief in God, I'm a woman of faith. And from the time that I, even before I came to serve on city council, God has given me vision for what the city can possibly be like, and my goal in being on the council is to help move the city forward in that direction. And I think we are going to be surprised, I honestly think that we are going to be surprised by what happens as we continue to work together as a community to, to move, to move all of this forward. I think that, that God honestly has plans for this to be a prosperous community, to go beyond things that we have ever known in the past. That's my personal vision, I think it's very possible. I think we're going to keep moving in that direction with not only the work of the city and the council, but the work of our community as well. And so I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Not a taken motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn to the next city council on December 9th.
Do you have a quick update?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I blew right by that. I apologize to city manager, she does have an update.
Yes, this is a quick one, I know we're all ready to go. We have two finalists that we've selected for airport director position. They are going to be at the airport on December 8th from 9:00 to 11:00 in the morning at the administration building.
Yep.
Correct? Okay. So I'm, I'm announcing that tonight because the, the public is invited, we have the tenants and stakeholder groups invited, of course, the council's invited, but if you're coming, I kind of need to know so we post the meeting. So is anyone available? Well, or coordinate, but typically we would just post the meeting, post it.
I'm in for council, times for council divided up if we have more than three.
Is there interest in, or availability, because that is during the workday.
What day of the week is it?
It's December 8th, which is a Monday.
Oh, good.
And it's from 9:00 to 11:00 in the morning.
Very interested.
Yeah, I can probably go there.
But Camo and Ashi working.
I could come.
Four, okay. We'll post it, just in case.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So we have a motion, do we have a second? Thank you. We have a motion by Councilman Glenn and a second by Councilman Berg to adjourn to the next regular city council meeting on December 9th, 2025, 5:30 PM here at City Hall. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, we adjourn. Thank you.